Good morning, everybody. Welcome. We have a full house here again today and a heavy agenda. It's nice to see everybody, so welcome. And I will call the meeting to order at 9:02 a.m. And I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and the teachings that they share of these lands and its people. I will now ask everybody to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Does administration have any additions to the agenda this morning?
Yes, administration has one addition, development permit D twenty-three dash zero thirty-five.
Okay, so development permit D twenty-three dash zero thirty-five, that will go, um, we will put that at nine point one as an addition. Bree, you have that. Uh, I think council has the handout on the addition. Everybody has that, correct? Uh, are there any other additions to the agenda this morning? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with the addition of development permit D twenty-three dash zero three five? Counselor Manah, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much for that. Are there any corrections or amendments to the July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt that? Counselor McGee, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. So we have no proclamations this morning. We have a few public hearings. Uh, the first public hearing is a text amendment to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash four dash D, uh, to amend the purpose and process sections of the land use bylaw twenty twenty dash twelve dash D. Just gonna move to page nine here, and I will declare the public hearing for this opened at nine oh five a.m. And those present today are myself, council, administration, members of the public, and everyone online. And I will now hand it over to Mr. Vanna. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, item, uh, this item is for a, um, purpose of it is to amend the land use bylaw twenty twenty twelve D, uh, and for a number of reasons. Uh, first, it, uh, it brings administrative and legislative portions of the bylaw in conformity with the municipal government act, uh, and the regulations, as they've been amended recently. Uh, repeals three, uh, older bylaws, uh, namely the, um, development authority bylaw, subdivision authority bylaw, municipal planning commission bylaw, uh, of which are either, um, ultra-viries, uh, because of their age or not being followed. Um, thirdly, it, uh, will streamline the development process and improve efficiencies and processing times, uh, costs and administrative resources. So on council gave, uh, this particular bylaw, uh, first reading on July twelfth, uh, as part of the stakeholder communications, uh, for this bylaw, uh, in accordance with the municipal government act, uh, section six oh six. Uh, the bylaw was advertised for two consecutive weeks in the local paper. Uh, we have not received any comments or submissions to this point. Uh, in terms of the, um, sections, I'd maybe like to quickly kind of go through those and, and highlight those. So the first one is, uh, one point two is the purpose of the bylaw. So this has been updated to include, uh, portions, uh, that are in the municipal government act. Uh, case in point is number D where the, uh, the bylaw does not have the authority to regulate residential tendencies. Uh, that has the effect of distinguishing between any individuals based on whether they are related or unrelated. Uh, and so that, uh, even though that was based on law, it's now written into the act. Uh, one point four, uh, this has been updated for, uh, for compliance. Section one point five, uh, this is the, um, amended to, uh, to deal with the, uh, development authority bylaw, the subdivision authority bylaw, and municipal planning commission bylaw, uh, being deleted in their entirety. Uh, section one point seven is the interpretation. So this has been updated for additional clarification, uh, for notations and drawings as they are submitted. One point eight deals with boundaries, and so it, uh, provides additional clarification on how boundaries are defined in the bylaw. Section one point nine, uh, this is updated wording that deals with the, uh, application and severability of the bylaw in case it's challenged. Uh, one point one one, uh, is replaced with the, uh, just the rewording. It deletes the municipal planning commission portion of it and, uh, replaces the wording, deals with the development authority and how the development authority operates. Section one point one three deals with the, uh, the duties of the development authority and the subdivision authority. Uh, these, particularly the subdivision authority was, was not in the bylaw before, but is now in the, in the bylaw. Uh, section two point two six deals with the subdivision and development appeal board. And this updates clauses that deals with, uh, SDAB decisions and, and how they may be appealed, uh, in pursuant to the act. Uh, two point six deals with determination of completeness and, and what constitutes completeness, uh, under the municipal government act. Section two ten deals with public consultation, and in this particular case deals with, um, when items will come to council for decision on development permits and variances. Uh, section two point three zero deals with, uh, and actually two point three zero all the way through to two point three six, deals with subdivision applications, what the procedures are, we're dealing with these and how they're processed, uh, and determined for completeness and decisions on that. And those conclude my remarks, Madam Mayor. Um, happy to answer any questions if there's questions of clarification.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, there are no comments. You said that anyone had attached with this or sent in. I will now call for comments from anyone on the floor in regards to the public hearing. No comments from anyone on the floor. Do we have any comments from anyone online? None, then I'll declare the public hearing closed at nine ten a.m. And this, um, item is on the agenda for a decision item. I believe it is nine point, uh, it'll be nine point two now going down the agenda. So we'll have an opportunity to ask questions and have further discussion on this. Uh, we have a second public hearing this morning for text amendment to land use bylaw twenty twenty twelve D for direct control district and redistricting. I will now declare that public hearing opened at nine eleven a.m. Those present today are myself, council, administration, members of the public, and those online. And I will hand it over to Mr. Vanna again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the purpose of this particular amendment is, is twofold. First, administration has presented to council a desire to enlarge the, the park use area or the DB lands, uh, to allow for future grant and municipal funds to be spent to improve that particular park space. Uh, the second reason is, uh, for the amendment of, to facilitate future development of the remaining DB lands currently undeveloped. Uh, and so this particular amendment does two things. One, it, um, it creates a direct control district that identifies what you can do, how development will be controlled on the direct control lands. And then secondly, it redistricts, uh, both enlarging the park area as well as, uh, creating the, uh, replacing the direct control district on the lands. So that's the, uh, the way it functions in this particular application. Uh, pursuant to the, um, municipal government act in section six oh six, the bylaw was advertised for two consecutive weeks. Uh, no submissions to this point have been received, uh, or comments. And, uh, those conclude my remarks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. I'll now call for comments from anyone from the floor in regards to this public hearing. No comments from the floor. Any comments from anyone online? Then I'll declare this public hearing closed at nine thirteen a.m. And we'll move along to the third and final public hearing this morning for land use bylaw text amendment twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash D for community standards. And I will declare the public hearing open for this bylaw at nine thirteen a.m. Those present are myself, council, administration, members of the public, and those online. Go ahead, Mr. Vanna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this particular bylaw amendment is a text amendment to the land use bylaw. Uh, the purpose of the amendment is to, uh, reduce conflict and redundancy with the community standards bylaw. And so sections have been removed out of, uh, this particular land use bylaw section. And, uh, and as councils aware, recently amendments were made to the community standards bylaw that, that basically beef up the community standards bylaw. So this, this amendment will eliminate the conflicts between the two bylaws. The, uh, the bylaw amendment was advertised, um, two consecutive weeks as required under municipal government act. Uh, council gave first reading to this particular bylaw, um, on July twenty-sixth. And those conclude my remarks, Madam Mayor. If there's any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Does administration have any, uh, comments in regards to this one?
No, Madam Mayor.
No. Are there any comments from anyone from the floor in regards to this public hearing? Any comments from anyone online? Then I will declare the public hearing closed at nine fourteen a.m. And that concludes our public hearings for this morning, and we'll move into our delegation items. Our first delegation is for the RCMP July stats, uh, Staff Sergeant Troy, or there you are behind that. Troy Raditz is here this morning. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, council. Uh, before we get into the stats, sir, I think, uh, one thing that's worth bringing to the attention of council is, so, uh, the twenty twenty-two crime severity index was recently released by the RCMP. And one of the things we saw was, uh, Drayton Valley was up slightly, uh, from, in twenty twenty-two. The crime severity index is just a calculation based on number of calls and different types of calls are weighted. Um, the, the increase we saw was mainly driven by a slight increase in assaults and a slight increase in break and enters in twenty twenty-two from the previous years. So Drayton Valley, it, it's a very slight increase and, uh, we are slightly high for the provincial average, but right in line with the rest of Western Alberta District. Um, specific to the July stats, um, we're seeing everything, uh, almost everything across the board. Uh, if you switch to the other page there, um, yeah, seeing almost everything, uh, continue to steadily decrease, which is good, and I think a testament to the hard work, uh, of the members in Drayton Valley. I'd like to take more credit, but, um, we all know that, that crime cycles. And we are seeing definitely a, a consistent downtrend over, over twenty twenty-three, and that continues through July. We are seeing a slight increase in theft unders, um, you know, something that would commonly be referred to as, as petty thefts. I dug into it a little bit, and, um, what we are referring to with the, uh, theft unders, we received a hundred and thirty-four calls for service that would relate to theft unders. And what we're seeing, the bulk of these are over fifty percent, fifty-seven percent of them. Our twenty-three percent is for shoplifting and thirty-four percent is from the theft of vehicles. So those are our two main drivers in the theft under, or sorry, theft from vehicles. Um, and one of the things we're looking at addressing this is we have a new member, um, uh, just started right from depot. And as part of his community engagement and his CAPR project, uh, we're going to explore some, uh, plans he may be able to implement, uh, through education and enforcement base to reduce that. But that is the only area we're seeing a slight uptick, and everything else is on its way down, which we're quite happy. Um, through July, the Drayton Valley detachment executed one search warrant, which, uh, resulted in recovery of property that was out in the county. Um, one, uh, controlled, uh, drugs and substances search warrant in town here resulted in the seizure of some crack and two adults being charged. Uh, WOD crew was in Drayton Valley in early July, resulting in a number of people being arrested on warrants, both within town and the county. Uh, so that was nice to see them out. They continue to be a great partnership. Uh, throughout July, we only had two thefts of motor vehicles in the town, and there was seven break and enters, and that spread between, um, uh, several residential, some business and, uh, others. So a fairly low number for the month compared to what we've seen in the past. One of the areas we continue to work on is we did see nine spousal abuse calls. So we are moving in the right direction because the same time period in twenty twenty-two, uh, we had fourteen. So we are, we are making headway in that direction, I think mostly through, uh, education. Right now in Drayton Valley, our current staffing levels are very good. We are, we continue to be a bit of an anomaly in the province on the contract policing side. Uh, we have a new member from depot, just started August second. Uh, he seems to be integrating into the detachment very, very well. Uh, we have our new GD corporal and new GIS member, both experienced members from, uh, BC. Uh, they're both in place and getting settled in and, again, integrating into the detachment very well. We're expecting another experienced member, uh, transferring in from Peace River, and he's set to arrive at the end of the month. So staffing-wise, we're doing very good. And Constable Kadoe E. Backer, that I think many of you on council know, uh, just recently, last Friday, completed his police dog service training. As you know, it's been a, Mike's kind of been a staple around the community with his puppies throughout the years. And it's been a long road for him, and he, he was successful, and he will be relocating to the lower mainland. I've talked into the, uh, PDS program manager, and Mike will be working, we've lent him to PDS, and he will be working his dog out of Drayton Valley in the short term while he waits to relocate to the lower mainland. Uh, and that's all I have, but I think Sergeant Hootner has something he'd like to address.
Yeah, I'm just gonna talk. I know, uh, like, four years ago, we started a camera registry here, and it was specific to Drayton Valley where we set up that they could email the detachment and register their cameras with us. We're gonna transition away from that. The RCMP has run a pilot project. They ran it Red Deer Parkland. It's called Capture. Um, it stands for Community Assisted Policing Through the Use of Recorded Evidence. Wow. Uh, but, uh, and they've now expanded that to the province. So, um, they've basically made it accessible for everybody in the province. Call it, if anybody goes and Googles rural Alberta capture, uh, they can then register their cameras on that site. It's very simple, rural Alberta capture. Uh, it's, there's a link to register your camera, and then it'll ask you all the questions where you are. The good thing about this site is it's integrated with mapping software where our registry, we'd have to kind of go through and find the addresses and, uh, see if we could link that up with where the crime happened with this one. I can go to the address and I can zoom in. It's like Google Maps, and it will have little dots of where the cameras are. So it's much more user-friendly for us. Um, so yeah, so we're encouraging the community and everybody to put the word out, rural Alberta capture, go there, register your cameras. But the only people that have access to the cameras are the police. And so I've registered, there's about three or four of us at the detachment that can log in and then see where all the cameras are. Um, so when you register, you won't, it won't be like the rest of the community can see your cameras. There's a separate login for police on there where we can pull up the cameras.
We, we can only pull up the location.
And we can only pull up location. So it will work the same as our registry. We will just know you have cameras, and you can put in what details you want about where your cameras are, what they see. But we won't ever get live stream. We'll then reach out to you. It'll have your contact information to see if you have anything that will help us in that offense. So it's not Big Brother in the Sky. We only know you have cameras. We won't actually be able to log into your cameras, uh, which is the same as our registry. Our registry was the same. We would just know that you had cameras, and then we would reach out to you to see if you captured anything. Um, yeah, I, cameras and the use of recorded evidence have become more and more. Everybody, like, so many people have cameras. We haven't got a lot of, uh, buy-in. I think our local camera registry had up to maybe twelve, I think, when I last looked. I was been discussing with Cody. Um, so that's not very many for the town. Um, so I would encourage everybody to put it out there. Go on, register your cameras. There's cameras everywhere. Um, it's hard to move in our country now, even as criminals, without being recorded somewhere. And so that is one of the main things we look for when we get even our theft unders. Who's got cameras in that area? Who saw them walking around, right? So. But, and I mean, the good thing about, we still do go door-to-door and canvas, but if we have this site, it saves that time, where we can just pinpoint who's got the cameras and just go see them or contact them directly, so. But yeah, that's just what I wanted to put a little jig in, that we are transitioning away from our Drayton Valley camera registry, and we're moving on to the rural Alberta capture site.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So yeah, does anybody have any questions for Staff Sergeant Raditz or Sergeant Hootner? Counselor Ballas.
Thank you. Uh, very encouraging to see the stats going in the right direction, or most of them anyway. Uh, in your report, uh, just, could you clarify for me where it says there were two hundred and seventy-five files with victim services unit? Referral scoring in Drayton Valley Municipal Eight, accepted thirty-four, declined fifteen. Can you clarify that for me?
Um, sorry, and what are you, you're just wanting an explanation to that entire thing? So, uh, so with the victim services referrals, the RCMP ha- has through consultation with, uh, the Alberta Victim Services, um, specific files in which we attach victim services scoring or provide referrals and that. Any file that, uh, is appropriate to attach victim services scoring. Um, and with that, then we turn them over to victim services, and from there, they, uh, they follow up. And, uh, this, with the two eighteen files with no, two hundred and eighteen files with no victim, that would be, uh, a call, I don't, Ryan might be able to speak to that better, but something that received, uh, VSU scoring but did not require VSU action.
Yeah. That's more like a, a scoring thing. They want us to put a VSU scoring on every, like, almost every file. So depending on what the occurrence is, there is gonna be a manit, it's, our program works, it's a mandatory VSU scoring. And lots of that is, they'll put the VSU scoring on it, and then, um, they have to score whether it's needed or not. I think it's just to push the membership to always think about VSU. So they'll go in, and they'll score it with VSU, and then they'll put VSU not required or no victim. So they'll attach that to it. So on that two hundred and seventy-four, it's because the files will be, they'll put the VSU scoring on it, and then there'll be a thing that says no victim. And I think it's just to trigger, hey, is, do you need to do a referral or not? Uh, where before I, it never had the score, and the members might miss it, that that should be referred to VSU. Now they have to actually add it and say yes or no to it. So I think that's probably what we're seeing. That's why we have so many that have the VSU scoring, but lots of those don't have victim to add to it.
So that two hundred and seventy-five was, sorry, that two hundred and seventy-five was just for the month of July?
Yeah, yeah.
So then is that referred to victim services? And does that tie them up with these files?
No, that, that would result in a referral. That's, that's scoring, that's purely a stats keeping measured by the RCMP. Because of the type of file, require a VSU scoring, and then the member makes a determination of whether a VSU referral is done.
So it doesn't mean that victim services is going to be actively looking at all?
No, it doesn't mean victim services has been engaged in that many files. It just means for our stats keeping, these are types of files that the member needs to consider VSU.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor McGee?
Morning, Troy. Good morning, Ryan. Um, couple of things, um, really nice to see you out, Troy, walking. I, I should have actually stopped the bike and, and shook hands with you because, uh, it's, you're, you're walking the beat, um, and so it's worth an explanation, uh, to, to explain what you're, what you're doing and why. But, uh, it was, it was good to see you yesterday, uh, out, out, uh, walking the beat. Um, so let me just get that answered, and then I'll ask the next couple of questions.
Okay, so we, uh, I'm, come from a strong operational background, and I'm definitely a lead from the front, um, type of person. So I've asked the membership to increase our visibility and approachability within the community that when they have, uh, the time and their workload allows to, to get members out and on foot patrols. And they've been doing a really good job. They, a lot of buy-in, both for their own mental health, for the benefits of the community, all that. And so when I have time and, uh, I tend to grab a young member and ask them if they would like to go for a foot patrol, and then we go and pick an area and, and just go take a ten, fifteen, twenty-minute walk and, and meet the people of the community and just increase our visibility, so.
Yeah, great stuff. Um, the, the courts, uh, we always talk about the courts. Are, are, do you, do you know, are the courts responding to, uh, do you see a shift at all, um, in the courts? Cause it's possible. I know you do your work, but we, you have to lean to the courts.
I would very much like to say yes, but that, in my opinion and my experience, is not the case. Uh, they tend to be set in a, a fairly firm course, and, uh, I don't, I can't speak to whether it's cost savings or, uh, the mentality of the courts in our justice system, but we do tend to continue to release a lot of people, a lot of people on their own recognizance. A lot of people that have been charged are getting released with, uh, no cash bails. Um, just basically a, a pinky promise to behave while they wait their court dates. And we are not meeting with a lot of success, and that does, uh, result in a lot of, uh, our workload is, is repeat offenders and people that are out. And through our GIS unit and the encouragement of the, the rank-and-file members, we are trying to really push the breach charges, the people that are not abiding by their court-imposed conditions or release conditions from the detachment to make sure they are getting additional charges. Cause the courts seem to take those more serious sometimes than their substantive charge, so. That is an angle. We're definitely working to try and reduce crime in the community.
Um, so the, um, the other thing I wanted to ask about was the, when you said the WOD crew, uh, I, I've forgotten what the acronym for WOD.
Sorry, Western Alberta District. So the province, the RCMP has split the province into, uh, four districts, and we are in the Western Alberta District, meaning our district office is in, uh, Grand Prairie.
So you would end up doing a blitz with the WOD crew, is that?
Yeah, the, the WOD crew, their mandate is to assist detachments with, uh, crime reduction. And so as they're available, they will, uh, reach out to membership in local detachments and see if there's targets identified or ways they can assist, and then they'll come down and work one-day-to-multi-day projects with the local resources. And so, yeah, we have the benefit here that we also get a lot of the, uh, Central Alberta District crew as well because they're responsible for Bretton Thorsby. And we, as we know, in this day and age, criminals are very mobile. So it's not uncommon to see, uh, Central Alberta District crew in Drayton Valley as well. So because we're right on the border, we actually take advantage of both crew teams.
Great news. Um, lastly then, um, I saw there were a couple of, uh, dead spruce trees taken out of, uh, the yard. Uh, I, I think that's terrific. We, we have some of our own trees that we have to remove, but it was good to see that. Um, and finally, the, we got your note on, uh, on your space. Um, I just received it yesterday or the day before, so. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to see your space a few weeks ago.
Yeah, no, I do appreciate that. And for those that haven't seen it, yeah, it came back that we're 50% under accommodated. So it is something that we're working with our facilities management now and I'm sure we'll have further conversations to decide which direction this heads, but. Thank you very much.
Counsel Commander?
Thank you, and thank you for both coming here and presenting to us. I think the, the capture, it is a fantastic project. I think it moves RCMP's workload towards a more online system. Just wondering, I know that you've put a Facebook post out on, on your Facebook pages, but let's try and get it out. I think maybe there's a role that we can play as a town as well. Just to, you know, get, get more information out there. I was wondering, you know, RCMP can access it, who else can, can access, who has cameras?
As far as like the police side? It's, it's just the Mounties, yeah. So it's run through our IT department and we had to get, I had to create my, through RTI, I had to get a login and password for it. So yeah, it's just specific police personnel in detachments. Yeah. Yeah, it's, cause there's kind of two sides to the website. There's a separate login where I have to go login to actually get into where the camera registry side, the login for the civilian side is just for registering their own cameras. So yeah.
Perfect, yeah, I know, just wanted to get that information out there, you know, there's, there's no reason that somebody shouldn't register their camera. It will be only when needed, like you said, right? So yeah, I think, you know, maybe post getting out through the town side as well will, will help to get more. Thank you.
Counsel Clark?
Just a, a quick question on the stats here. I know it's, it's kind of January to, to July of this year versus last year, same period. Is there any benefit to benchmarking against, say, the Hinton's and Edsons and White Court's and Rocky Mountain Houses? Or is that, or are we just kind of our own little animal here?
Well, that's funny, actually Sergeant Hoopner and I discussed that. And. We are in much better shape than almost every other detachment in Western Alberta District as far as the way our stats look. Hinton, White Court, Peace River. You know, many comparable communities are very much, their crime stats are on the rise. And we just didn't feel that it was worth presenting because, you know, we're focused on Drayton Valley and there, there could come a time through natural crime cycles, our staffing levels go down, where we're the ones that are on the rise and they're on the decrease. So we didn't want to throw that out there and then, you know, in a year or two years, if the situation changes, have to decurl. But compared to the rest of Western Alberta District, Drayton Valley crime stats are probably the shining star of Western Alberta District right now.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time and updating us today. We certainly appreciate you coming in and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you very much.
Take care, thank you again. So moving along our delegations, our next is community recognition. We have Ms. Yolanda Ladinsky this morning that we've invited to recognize her at council today. Ms. Yolanda's history tells us that back in Mexico, you danced professionally as the principal dancer for Bellas Artist de Guadalajara and started Gasolus Ballet back in Mexico in 1984 in your hometown. In 1989, you then came to Canada where you continued to teach, where you, where you continued your teaching career. And then you started your own dance studio in your home garage. With the hard work, that Gasolus Ballet Studio was built from the ground up, its location on 50th Avenue. The past 2022 and 2023 dance season was the 30th year that you celebrated anniversary. So congratulations, I had the opportunity to come and visit and we're very proud of the 30 years that you've brought to our community. You celebrated that back in June. You've been part of this community and you've helped shape multiple generations, teaching dance, being a judicator, being an ambassador for the town. You've made a difference in the lives of children, youth and adults, and not only as a dancer, but as a member of the community. We want to express our appreciation over the 30 years that yourself and Gasolus Ballet members have been part of the town events. For example, you volunteered and you've donated your studio space to Shaken and Drayton fundraisers, performed many flash mobs, you've attended our mayor's gala, joined in Canada Day's celebration and parade. You've danced for the DV 100 at halftime shows and so much more. And don't forget that COVID was, COVID has been a very hard time for yourself and you managed through that and you're still are strong after 30 years. The current dance studio spaces for sale, we'll be very sad to see you sell and go, but we wish you the best of luck in your next, next chapter of life. And we're very proud and appreciative of the 30 years that you've given us and that you've been in our community. So thank you very much and congratulations. And we'd like to get a picture with you now. Everybody come on down, dance on down. Yeah, we're very appreciative and thank you for 30 years. Yeah, creating so much livelihood and dance celebration and identity, thank you.
We will miss you when you're gone, but I know where your grandchildren are, so I understand.
We'll come visit you. It's so nice to recognize and celebrate the people that live in Drayton Valley and have contributed and given so much and have really been that part that have shaped our community. So thank you very much and it, it's an honor to be celebrating and congratulating you and having you come and share this moment with us. So thank you very much for that. Oh, thank you. So we'll move along to the delegations before everybody gets a little bit teary eyed. And is it okay Sandra, if we jump to 7.5 Warming Hearts? Marty just has another appointment at 10:30, is that okay? Perfect, thank you very much. So we'll jump to 7.5 Warming Hearts delegation, Mr. Marty Prentice, and I'm not sure if Jordan. Just you, okay, well, good morning, welcome, thank you for coming. The Rural Winter Shelter Program grant?
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't turn that on.
That's okay.
And, and as you're aware, the, it's the Poverty Reduction Group that leases the Warming Hearts Shelter, which is operated by the Warming Hearts, Hearts Society, they're two independent societies. And we presented a, a budget on behalf of the Poverty Reduction Group. And there's really just three items that we are looking at fulfilling there. They're basically the, the rent, the utilities and the building and liability insurance. The other items are basically looked after generally through the Warming Hearts that operates the facility. And I want to emphasize that later in this week, we are commencing renegotiations with the landlord to renew the lease and hopefully extend it for a longer period of time. We're on a one-year lease right now, which expires in December. And after that, you know, we would like to extend it longer. Excuse me. But the, I, I understand this grant is a one-year grant, just like last year's was. But we really need some sort of a continuity and permanence. We're, we're reasonably satisfied with the, with the premises right now, although there's some, a few issues that we can overcome. The location is good, the homeless community has gotten used to it, they feel comfortable there and it, and we're running a number of other services out of there on, on their behalf. So we would really like to renew that lease and we are looking at trying to negotiate the rent down somewhat. We want the landlord to do a few repairs, which we're hoping to do. And we would like to get a minimum of a two-year lease. We might take a chance whether we get a guarantee from council or not, we may take a chance and try to renew for two years anyways. But, but it's, it's difficult when we're just getting one-year funding at a time. We'd like to see the council do something to, whether it's setting aside some money out of this current grant to allow us to have a guaranteed for next year as well. So that's the, one of the difficulties, which I emphasized last time we were here, was the same, same issue as longevity. And if anything, this problem is not going to go away with, with our, with our vulnerable people on the streets and without proper shelter. As you probably or might be aware, the, the Coach Motel, or whatever it's called now, is probably closing down. Our information is it's closing down by, by the end of September. And a number of the quasi-homeless people or partially unsheltered people are couch surfing there. Few are actually quasi-tenants and some are couch surfing there. So that's going to throw more people out on, on, on the street potentially. And our service will become even more critical, even though we do not offer overnight services, just daily shelter and, and food and other supports. So I want to emphasize that as well. It'll probably put more pressure on the pods this coming winter. I understand from, from Kelly Forster, who keeps a very careful track of this, that on average, there's about 11 couch surfers in the, use that term loosely, couch surfers in the coach right now. And at one point last winter, there were about 27 there. That's in addition to those who might be staying in the pods or camping out. So the, the disappearance of the coach will put a little more pressure on the pods as well as our facilities. And again, I emphasize this, this issue is not going away. Another item we had in the, in the budget, which I did not prepare, was a, was a. I think it was. Program staff wages, that was thrown in there over the objections of our two full-time staff, Kelly Forster and Jordan Font, who worked without any compensation at all, no honorarium, no wages. And they refused to accept any. They did not want us to even throw that item in the budget. They, they're just, they're, I guess they're self-supporting sufficiently and they do not want to have any compensation. And that's a very unique situation in our, our community for any, any organization or group providing services to our, our public. No, no staff wages or honoriums whatsoever in the budget lines. So that's my appeal today.
Well, thank you very much, I'll open it up for questions from council. We do have it as a decision item a little bit further down in our agenda today. So we appreciate you coming in and kind of letting us know what the ask was today and giving us a little bit more information on that. Maybe I'll just ask a question, do you know with the Center of the Day Program, the number of people that are accessing this, have we seen a decline in that number since there are resources that are attached to it? Do we see people getting out of the situations that they're in?
Unfortunately not in that sense. We did see a decline after the evacuation, because most of our clientele was, were bussed to Edmonton. A number have not returned, we're not sure what the numbers are right now. But then again, the, the, the numbers are starting to go up again. For a while there, shortly after we, people returned to the community, we were only getting about 12 to 15 a day, but now more recently, it's gone up to over 20 a day our, our accessing, which is almost pre, pre, pre-evacuation numbers. So, and I'd like to be optimistic and say, yeah, we're seeing some of these people being able to move on. But that, I, we, it's, it's, it's really, it's anecdotal, but I just don't see that happening very much, as, as much as I'd like to see it. Some have moved away from the community, but then I've noticed now, we've got a few new people. I, when I was volunteering there the other day, a few new faces are in there again, which, which I haven't seen before. And so it's, I, again, if you come by and, you know, visit and see the circumstances that these individuals are in, it's difficult to imagine them moving on to better, better things, as much as I'd like to see it happen. A few do, but that, that, that's rare, unfortunate.
So are they accessing the resources that are provided, like say for mental health or addiction? Or are, like, are you seeing them use those resources?
Some of them are, some of them are, we have a couple of social workers come in at, at times and there's, there's a few utilizing them. And I, I don't know what the results are confidential, but there are, you know, there's conversations going on and it's happening, so.
Counsel Commander?
Thank you, and thank you Marty for coming here and presenting to us. I know, you know, Warming Hearts is doing a fantastic job taking care of these people for the community. So thank you very much for that as well. Just wondering, you know, you mentioned about the location and, you know, some of the challenges that you may have. Do you think that's, you know?
Sorry, I, I, my hearing aids aren't working today.
Sorry, no. About the location that you mentioned that there are some challenges? When, when you weigh the pros and cons of that location, do you think that's best location for?
I, I think the location's fine because we don't have any issues with our neighbors, for one thing. And certain other areas of town, there could be issues with, with neighbors and where we are, it's, as you know, it's adjacent to Bottle Depot, part of the same building and, and it's, and now I guess our, our clientele, our homeless people know where it is. They're, they're getting used to coming there and again, there'll be enough surge in the winter. You know, obviously we'll get more people in the winter, just like the pods, the use of the pods will up in the winter as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counsel Clark?
Marty, do you have a, a specific number that you're looking for? Or is it just kind of coincide with kind of whatever negotiated rent rate is?
Yeah, we would like to have a commitment of about the, I think it's 50, 56,000 dollars for this year. We would like to, we'd urge the council to find a way of also trying to guarantee or setting aside that for next year. I understand this, this actual particular program or fund is a one-year thing. So there may be some issues about having to spend it in this current year. But there, you know, there may be around that, a way around that, if there's sufficient money there, setting some aside or whatever for, for next year. And. Or council goes out and says, yep, we'll put another line in our, our budget and we will support you for the next year. It, it gives us a little more flexibility in dealing with the landlord and also maybe doing a few extra tenant improvements we'd like to do. And that, that other funding would come from Warming Hearts itself, not, not from the, not necessarily from the poverty reductions.
Counsel McGee?
Morning sir, it's always nice to see you. Thanks for stepping up and I know from back in the, in the days that you've come and looked at this particular issue that's faced our community and, and you've, you've said I, I'll help. And I, I think that's, that's huge, just for that alone. My question that I'm worried most about right now is winter and overnight services. We have the pods, the coach is talking about shutting down, which we know that that, quite aware that there were a lot of folks that were using that as, as their winter home, which means that the pods may not be able to. Be effective for a lot of people and no overnight services. Have, have you talked about that? Before, we used to have the MAT program and those kinds of things. Have you had discussions about that?
Frankly, no, I, I, I think the pods were one way of replacing that MAT program or what it was. And some of our people will still, I mean, they'll be camping out. It's a significant camp as we know by the. There's a significant camp, as we know, by the dump. And I think some of the, I haven't been there, but some of the people I understand are getting ready for winter by whatever you can do to winterize your shelter. And, you know, we just, our volunteer base is very, very limited. We, it's hard for us to reach out and do a lot of other studies or even fundraise or try to branch out.
Okay. As you said, Madam Mayor, that we have a decision to come. So Marty, I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. You did mention fundraising. I know that when we talked to the organization in the past, there was the intention to fundraise. Is that intention still there? Like when you do talk about long-term, two to three years and things like that, are there plans for fundraising or looking at, you know, reaching out to organizations or businesses that could help in the community?
Well, the Warming Hearts itself has done some of that. And we've, this past year, we've got a significant grant from the Great Lakes Community Foundation as well. And we've, we've applied, excuse me, we applied a few associations for some grants and we're working on that. And again, it's a matter of limited person power to achieve this. We've got a very, very small volunteer base and it's difficult for us to do that. If council has any ideas or would like to assist us in reaching out to some organizations or businesses, we would certainly welcome that. Not that we're not maybe going to be able to do some of that in the future anyways.
Absolutely. I hear. Thank you very much for coming in today and presenting. We have a decision ahead of us to discuss the funding when it comes to the Rural Winter Shelter Program. I know that this is a grant that we know we have for the next year, but we don't know for the years coming. It's something in the past when we did have the MAT program. MAT program would open, I believe, in October and sometimes in November, we still didn't know if we had the funding. So unfortunately, it's just the path that we seem to go down with the provincial government when it comes to housing our most vulnerable population, that it's not always as easy as we hope it would be. So we have a few things to consider, I think, when it comes to the decision item. But I certainly appreciate you coming in today for everything that you do for the most vulnerable in our community and the time and efforts that you dedicate. So thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
We'll be talking about this a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you. Okay, we'll jump back to our 7.3 delegation, Ms. Sandra Barnard. And Lucas Wilson is here for the Eagle Point Blue Rapids delegation this morning. Oh, and I didn't see you behind the pole there. We have a third guest as well.
Thank you. Counselors, please. Thank you. Thank you, Lucas. Make me operate that too, then, Tom. Wow. To advance? Okay. Thank you. That's good. Come back.
Good job.
Thank you, Lucas.
Good morning, counselors, Madam Mayor. Lovely to see you all. This morning, I just wanted to bring with me our two fabulous summer students that we've enjoyed over the season. We have Mackenzie Duper and Lucas Wilson, who've done a lot of work this summer that's been invaluable. They've worked with kids. They've done some of the nasty chores that us in the office can't do anymore because we're getting too old. And so it's been a real pleasure to have them with us for the summer. So thank you guys for being here and you can go sit down.
You're welcome, yeah.
Thank you. Just before I get started too, I did want to take the opportunity on behalf of the Parks Council and I guess as myself as a resident of the town of Drayton Valley, the, just to say thank you for the wildfire work that you folks all did and your staff and volunteer firefighters and everyone. It's, it's kind of hard to believe what we endured and went through and I really appreciate it. Sorry, I didn't mean to get emotional about that, but it's, it's one of those things. It was, it was a difficult time and my heart goes out to you because I know you're invested in this community and all the people that put a lot on the line to make sure that we had a successful outcome. So thank you for that. I'll just get into my report now. I think I had dropped off the annual report to you guys about the beginning of July, a little bit delayed this year in getting it produced with the wildfires. So this is our 2022 report. And I won't, I won't go through the entire report that you've been presented, but I do want to speak a little bit to some of the highlights. So I'll start with community events. Did I break it? I broke the clicker.
Are you pointing here, Albera? Do you point it there?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So some of the community events that we've held over 2022, the Pumpkin Walk was one of our most successful. And we had a number of scavenger hunts and we had a women's wellness retreat, 14 events overall through the course of 2022 that were sponsored by the Parks Council with an event participation of 2,659 people. The Pumpkin Walk itself, though, was, that event had around 1,400 people attend. So it's kind of grown into a, quite a mega event for us to host, but we'll, we will continue doing that with our partners from Aim for Success and we garner a lot of support from the community for that event. So we're very appreciative of that. Next slide, please. In, in 2022, the town of Drayton Valley supported us with $9,100 of contribution to community events. As you recall, you did sponsor the Fire and Ice Festival, which we had about, it was a very cold Fire and Ice. We had about 550 people out for that. We did the Earth Day Garden in a Bag giveaway, which was fun. We partnered with Pembina Pipeline and Canadian Tire and yourselves with that event. We also did Park Stay 2022 and then, of course, the Pumpkin Walk. So we're very appreciative of the support that you gave to those events, all very well-attended events and great feedback we received on those events too. So thank you for that. Next slide, thank you. So another report highlight, just wanted to speak a little bit about our environmental and outdoor education program. This is kind of our, our little gem that we love in the office. We are, we have folks that work for our organization that are all about stewardship and all about connecting kids to nature. And my prime example is my colleague Kathy Schwangler, who is a self-described nature nerd and loves all things nature and loves kids. So it's a, it's a great combination. In 2022, we were able to run 142 program sessions. That's with two staff, that part-time staff, I will say as well, that ran those programs, giving 4,050 student experiences. We were at 13 schools or 13, schools would come to us as well. They would come out to the parks as well, but we would do school visits. And we hosted 10 different communities as well, coming out to the Pembina Nordic Club for the most part as, as a place to recreate and to do nature, environmental and outdoor education work. Next slide, please. So it is a pleasure always to work with students. And we're very appreciative this year, the Wild Rose School Division nominated us as a Friends of Education partner in the community. So we were very pleased to get that nomination. Next slide, please. This is just a little bit of information around our trail usage. So we utilize automated trail counters so that we do get some data on how much trails are being utilized. Not all trails have counters, but we do have five out in the field right now. As of last year, we had, well, the Rotary Pembina Nordic Community Trails. So those are the trails right adjacent to the cemetery. Those are our most highly utilized trails at 11,546 visits. So that's, that's a very well-utilized trail. And we're very appreciative of the town of Drayton Valley as, as they have been a great partner in helping to maintain that trail relative to grass cutting. So occasionally they'll take the big plail down there and mow the grass and it's very, it's very helpful. But that, that trail is so well-utilized that it is, it is beaten down for the most part on the pathways. Okay. So that's just an example of the, a lot of the trails that are designed, in particular the trails at the Pembina Nordic, when they are not being utilized as cross-country ski trails, which, as you know, you don't cross a cross-country ski trail with your shoes or boots on, you are on skis. But in the summertime, of course, those trails can be utilized for hiking. A lot of people use them for mountain biking. And the Pembina Nordic are establishing a lot of single lane kind of trails, like a narrower trail that's more conducive to mountain biking or fat biking in the winter to make it a little bit more of an adventurous kind of trail. Also good for snow shoeing in the winter as well at the facility. So trails are valuable and people love them. Okay. This I didn't put into the annual report that, that was made available to the public. But I did want to share some data that we obtained. Last year, we did do a park survey and we utilized Brandy Fredrickson from the Free Press, her adventure guide as one of our advertising spots. So we just had a QR code in there so that people could scan that and it would take them to our survey. And we also ran it in the Free Press newspaper as well. So we didn't have a huge uptick on, or uptake on participants that did the survey. We only had about 65 responses. However, the responses we did get were, were very favorable to the questions we asked. And a couple that I will feature are when we asked if you've done activities within the parks, 48, or sorry, 49.2% people said yes, they've done activities in both Eagle Point and Blue Rapids Park. 21.5% said they've just done activities in Eagle Point Park. And then 23.1% have, have not experienced anything in either park. So good to see that there's utilization of the parks. When we asked them if they had done any participation relative to the activities that we host, so i.e. the Pumpkin Walk or Park Stay or one of the various activities that we host, this is not available for you on the slide, but it's on the pages that, that I gave you there. We are at 78.5% of respondents had participated in, in an event that we have hosted. When we've asked if, if they've noticed an increase in the opportunities to be able to participate in events, we also got a strong response there. Oh, sorry, that other number was, should have been 72.3. This one was 78.5, that yes, people are recognizing that there are more events available to do within the parks. So those, those are good data numbers that we can use and hopefully we'll probably run another survey next year and kind of keep correlating that data so that we get some trend lines forming and get a better understanding of where we are in the community. We still do find that a lot of people don't know who we are or what is available for resources in the parks, but that is starting to improve, I think, year over year. And we will keep working away and letting, letting people know the facilities and resources and clubs that they can access through the Parks Council. Next slide, please. This was just some of the, relative to the survey, some of the comments that we received and I, I won't read them out, but just a lot of love and appreciation that the organization does exist and that the facilities are available for public access. That was kind of the huge sentiment from people and especially to the events that are planned. People really value that those events are available for them and their families to access. Next slide. Just, I'm not entirely sure how many of you are familiar with our governance structure, not that it's, but I thought I'd take the time just to do a little bit of an explanation. On our board, we do have government representatives. So of course, the town of Drayton Valley through Monica Sheriffs is our council person that is representing on, on our board. We also have representation from Brazos County, a counselor, Cara Westerland. And then from Alberta Parks, we have a representative as well. All of the operating members are folks that have community clubs that have leases within the boundaries of the park. So for example, the Pembina Nordic Ski Club has the lease on which they have their club. So anybody that has a lease or is a, an operating partner that utilizes the facilities or the, the terrain of the park, i.e. a group like the Riverboat Association, they don't have a lease per se, but they utilize the river. So those folks are all at our table as well. Then our final group that's at the table are the interest members. So those are folks that have sometimes leases, i.e. oil companies that may have leases within the park boundaries or dispositions, as they're often referred to. Satin gravel represent, representatives, the adjacent landowners. So those are the people that live around the park. And then also the Drayton Valley Hospitality and Tourism Authority sits in as a special member. So we, we have a huge representative body of people that take part in our meetings and, and really affect a lot of, a lot of members of the community when you look at how many people belong to each club. So that's just a little explanation on that. And I think that is all I would like to present on. One last thing before I go to questions. As I do annually, I come asking for a letter of support as I go about my application to Alberta Parks for our operating grant. I've been given the opportunity to apply for a multi-year grant this year, a three-year grant for operations from parks, which would be hugely beneficial to our organization so that we could do a little bit easier planning and have some continuity year over year. So we would certainly appreciate a letter of support from Town Council.
Well, thank you very much for that. Lots of exciting things happening for sure. I will open it up for questions. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, when I look at the Nordic trails, I know Curtis Bucken keeps track of folks that go there and do disc golf.
Yes.
Is that included in here as well, those numbers?
Yes, it, I'm trying to think where we have. I believe it is, Colin, I'd have to double check that. I'm not entirely sure if our, our counters situated right on the disc golf course. In fact, I think it's not.
And that's fine. The reason I ask is I know he's kind of shown me some pretty extraordinary numbers when it comes to the disc golf rate and the amount of rounds they're playing and all that sort of stuff. So I think that would just lend well to what you have here.
Yeah, that's actually, that's a good point because we could, we could easily track that, that number. And we were at the park yesterday and, and the parking lot at Pembina Nordic was completely full yesterday. The, the area's being so well utilized, so, yeah. And, and the disc golf is a big part of that for sure.
Counselor Camano?
Thank you and thank you, Sandra, you know, for what you do with the Eagle Point Blue Rapids Parks Council. Just wondering about the, the center. You know, we, we had that for a few years now. You know, utilization wise, just for the information for the community, what kind of activities do we do there and all that?
Sure. So the, kind of the Monday through Friday use of the center is what we have worked out an arrangement with the Pembina Nordic Club, that EPBR Parks Council, we use it for our education program. So we have a number of school groups that come through and will, will utilize that as a home base area, but then maybe go off to venture onto one of the trail systems or do activities into the park. So it's well utilized from that standpoint. Where we're starting to garner a little bit more utilization is in rentals. So we are getting some community rental for that property. It was, I, I think COVID kind of stalled that out because we were initially getting a fairly good uptake, then slowed down with COVID. And now I think people are just starting to remember and we're advertising more that it is available as a rental facility for, for, you know, a reasonably that it is available as a rental facility for for, you know, a reasonably small gathering of, you know, we could, you can seat seventy-two in the main, the main area upstairs. So it's a, it's, it's, it's getting better for sure. It's year over year. We've or like since since things opened up from COVID, like our twenty twenty-three numbers will be far superior to our twenty-twenty-two numbers. And I I anticipate that trending upward.
Thank you.
Councillor McGee.
Good morning, Sandra.
Good morning.
And Lucas and Mackenzie, thank you for all your work. Sandra, a couple of things on my mind, forest fires.
Yes.
You brought it up. So the Bowbenders, I think, were in a bit of the track of the fire. No?
No, the Evergreen Shooting Club, they sustained fairly significant damage to their facility. But they are, they are currently in the works of of getting that facility up and running, hopefully very shortly. There's a, there's a process they will undertake with Alberta Parks and their insurance to to make sure that that facility can be utilized safely again.
So that was really the only out of your.
That's, yeah. No, well, see, the Horse Club's facility west of Drayton Valley on the Pembina River is is one of their facilities. Their second facility is actually in Blue Rapids. And it's, it's just, just buttoning up. We're just buttoning up development of that. There's another equestrian staging area and a little campsite within Blue Rapids on the west side of the river. So if you were to go down Range Road, eight, well, eighty-one, like where the Violet Grove dump is, and then back toward the east and then back south is where that staging area is. We haven't really advertised it very much because we want to get the work done on the area before the announcement is made that it's open and operational.
Hey, the second thing, there was the, you're looking for, for the first time, a three-year grant.
Yeah.
Just like Marty is looking for some sustainability and understand where you could be in the next years rather than waiting always. So that's great, that letter of support, I think, would no issues, I think, supporting that. But my question is, currently, right now, in your budget, how does the town support? And the county, how do we support you now?
That's a great question. I'm so glad you brought it up. So typically, in the last number of years, the town has been very receptive to granting events, community events. They will help with the sponsorship and I just write a grant application, submit it. And and generally, you guys come across with some grant dollars. For the Fire and Ice Festival, we've, the the town has been interested in having us host that. But I've, I've, I've not really had, or we've not really had the opportunity to establish a annual dollar amount around that. And that's, that's hard. I, because I I don't often know if you guys are supportive of wanting to pursue that festival for the for the year, because really, I, you know, for a festival like that, you'd need to start planning now for a for a February event, of course, right? So so that's a little bit. There's, there's some movement there that we we could do to to make that a little bit better. From an operational standpoint, I do not receive any funding dollars from the town of Drayton Valley or Brazos County. Initially, when the Parks Council was first formed, there was a sentiment from both the town and county, as I reviewed the historical documents, that they would be supportive operational, operationally of the organization. That has not been the case for the last number of years. And and to be honest, that's I I've never directly asked you for operational dollars. And part of that reason is because I wanted to make sure that as I came into my term as executive director, that I felt we were at a place that I could say we bring really great value to this community. Not that they didn't before, but under under my watch, I want to make sure that, yes, we're bringing great value to this community. And I kind of feel like we're at that place now. So that is a consideration. I'm glad you brought it up, Tom, and I would love to have conversations about that. The the other piece of operational dollars, if the town and county were both supportive of that, is it is it gives me an endorsement as I go to the province. And the province is the biggest, the biggest funder of our organization. So it it, if I can show, you know what, we've got buy-in from all these people and all these corporate sponsors, it's hard for the province to say, oh, we don't want to, we don't want to work with you. And I mean, I'm try, I'm pretty modest in what in what we even request from the government. I get it. That's, this is taxpayers' money. I get it. So it better bring value. So.
Perfect. Thanks very much, Sandra.
Yes, thank you. Fantastic update. My husband and I always go out to the trails. We probably go out a couple of times a week and enjoy them. They're fantastic. One of the questions I do have is the QR code on the Hilltop Trails doesn't work.
QR code on Hilltop Trails?
So Hilltop Wiley West, when you see the little QR code at the little stops that kind of go two, one, five, when you see the QR code, it doesn't work.
No, that QR code does not work. There's, there's, that's one of my summer, well, it was supposed to be one of my summer projects. The wildfire did do a little. Yes, there are some QR codes in the park that were were established that were interpretive. Sometimes they would have interpretive information on them or directional information. Some of those QR codes need to be updated. So that's, thank you for raising that.
Yeah, because I I thought they worked at one time.
They did. They.
And then it could bring up the map, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just so you know, there's that, the Hilltop ones, that they weren't working just the last time we were out there.
Thank you.
But yeah, fantastic trails. We're very fortunate to have the trails that we have in our community. I know that we've brought along other people with us on hikes and they're just in awe at the the trails that we do have. So they're great, fantastic. Thank you for all the programs that you and everybody provide to everyone in our community and the events that you put on there.
Thank you.
Very well celebrated. And yeah, the people look forward to it. Attendance is high. So thank you for everything you do and for coming today and giving us your update.
Thanks so much for having me. I appreciate it.
And thank you, Mackenzie and Lucas. Okay, we have one last delegation here this morning before I call a break, and that is seven point four Humans Helping Humans. Mr. Bob White, if you want to come to the podium, please. Good morning. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, councilors, good morning. As you are aware, and some of the folks in the audience may be aware, we've been managing the pods since January. And in the management of the pods, we have determined that there are a few things that we would like to see a little, done a little differently. And there's a reason behind all of them. I'll give you the the items that we want to look at, and then we can talk about why they're necessary. We want to approach the town to consider putting skirting, insulated skirting on the pods. We now have a temporary manager due to some money that we received from the town. But we would like to make that a permanent position. And that is going to cost some money, of course. Guaranteed assurance of funding when we're doing research grants. Our admin support is not in a position, we as an organization are not in a position to pay somebody to do research grants for the pods. We are just simply managing the pods. And extraordinary expenses. I'm, I am aware and very thankful to Town Council for the last extraordinary expense that we had, where we had an individual create a lot of damage. But it required somebody to come to Town Council. That's taken away from your time, your valuable time. And also, we have to find somebody that's going to come and present the case to you. I believe that you need to have some way of dealing with some extraordinary expenses as they come up. The last item is the budget. And we've been fortunate that we have stayed within the budget that we had. We've renegotiated a contract with the janitorial services. And we were able to find a little bit of money to make it work. It's working, but it's working right on the line. And we would like to suggest that there be a fifteen percent increase minimum of the of the budget that we have. Now, the skirting. One of the big issues of that is we're on propane heat. That is a very expensive method of heating. Unfortunately, to run natural gas would be out of this world cost. I've cost that out and we're looking at about fifty thousand dollars to run natural gas from the old Public Works Building to the pods. I had a company come in and it was an incredible amount of money that we were going to have to spend. It just wasn't worth it. But we are burning propane in the winter time and that propane is being, I'd look at it, there's dollars going up the chimney. One of the reasons why we're we're going through so much heat is the fact that every part of that pod is being chilled at thirty below, when it's thirty below outside. We have no, the heat, there's no heat coming up from the floor, but there is a lot of cold air. When these people are out in the, out in their camps and it's thirty below, they throw another log on the fire or they turn up the heater or whatever, they don't have that luxury when they're in the pods. They get what we give them. And it's set at a, a temperature that cannot be changed. The thermostat is in the furnace room and it is secured so that nobody can play with it. You've got a constant cold coming up. I think that is, that creates problems for the people that are in it. They they can't put on any more clothes. They can't take off the stuff they've been in all day. They have the, they have to keep them, keep them on for a while. And I believe that the skirting, I know for for a fact that the skirting would make a big difference. Now, when we ask for a guarantee of an allowance, allocation of money for the manager, I'd like to point out, the manager does quite a number of things that prior to this position being established, we were paying somebody to do, a contractor. For example, we have to get somebody in in the middle of the night. We'd have to pay the janitorial fees for the janitor to come down and open to, open up the rooms for the plumber. And really, the only people that we would use at night is is plumbing and it's the heat, if the furnace goes out. So we would have to pay for that. The batteries in the doors are a constant problem. That's all part and parcel of the manager's position and what she does currently. So we believe that the money is being very well spent. And the, and it's not a wage that we pay for that. That's more like a per diem. It's a, it's, it's far from a wage. I think I would have made, when I was in the industry, I would have made approximately what she makes for a day, I would have made in about probably thirty-five minutes on the job. So it's, it's a very minimal amount. The funding for research grants, you folks know what is involved in some of these research grants, or research grants, sorry, funding grants. You know what's involved in manpower. We had one grant that our admin support was looking at, was seventy-two pages long. And no, and there was no way that humans could, would or could support that. So I think that is, that is excellent. The extraordinary funds to have a, I think, would would be a benefit because we can get things done in a timely manner. The last, the last big incident that we had was approximately six thousand dollars. By the time that thing was finished, it started out about five thousand dollars. By the time we got it done, I think it was up around six thousand because of the delays and the month that goes by and inflation, the way it's running right now. I think it's, we're better off fixing the things immediately. And as well as the, excuse me. As well as the actual costs going up, the grant money, by the way I understand it, the province has, if a unit is taken out of service, funding for that unit is taken out of service, taken away for the period that it's out of service. So it would be to a benefit to be able to get them fixed as quickly as possible. And I do know that you folks have much better time, things to do with your time than to come and listen to me asking you for more money. I think the the CEO, the town administration people would would handle that much more efficiently. Everybody knows where the inflation is going. It's not going down. As of yesterday, we realized it's going back up again. So I think we need to make sure that the pods are adequately funded. I also want to express, I think we are in a very unique position here in Drayton Valley with these pods. I don't know too many places that have. It's a temporary way of taking care of the homeless. I look at Edmonton and I see tent cities on boulevards and stuff like that. We don't have that here. And I think we're very fortunate. I think the work that Mr. Prentice and and Kelly Forrest does at the Warming Hearts, all part of, part and parcel of the one pitch, and I and I want to commend them as well as you folks for having the insight to actually do this to start with. Now, we are going to be voting on whether or not we're going to be extending our services for another year. We're going to be doing that vote on the twenty-first and of of April. We had originally planned to do it earlier, but because this meeting was on the sixteenth, we wanted to come so we could present all of the information to the people that are going to make that decision. We didn't, we didn't want to give them half the information. It's, it's a difficult sell. And and so I I just think we need to be in the best position we can when we present it to them. And that's my presentation.
Well, thank you very much for that. So today's your presentation and you're having your meeting on August, August twenty-first, is that?
We're voting on, we're, we're doing electronic vote. Our bylaws allow us to do an electronic vote. And it will be a secret ballot vote. What we do is we send out an email to each individual. We don't send out a blanket email. We we count the votes when they come in. Only two people see the the results. Currently, I'm acting, I'm the acting president of the foundation, so myself and Michelle Blanchard would be the only two people that see who votes which way.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions this morning for Bob? Councillor McGee?
Bob, the last time I was at the meeting, there was some discussion of who gets to vote. So it's just occurred to me, and I think that discussion was that as a, as a committee member, I don't get to vote. Am I correct in that?
Only the executive board gets the vote on this.
Executive.
Yeah. Now.
How many executive?
We have nine.
Nine. Let me just see my notes. That's it for my questions. I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Fock, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm missing here, I guess, is dollar values, like, so what's our current budget? You know, what's our current budget? You know, what's the skirting going to cost? You know, what's that extra fifteen percent on the janitorial services? You know, how much are you asking for in terms of extraordinary expenses, that contingency? So I need, I guess I need some, some dollar values associated with that.
The number, I thought about this quite a while before I came here. It's impossible to say what we would need to have in reserve or in a contingency fund. We had one incident that that ran about just under six thousand dollars. We, that's the only instrument of real expense that we had through the whole thing. We could have the communications between the doors and intercom messaging go wonky and then we're in the technology. And I have no way whatsoever of telling you what that would be. I would, I would be false for me to come and tell you. I would, I would be false for me to come and tell you that, that we have any number. There's three really expensive things that could happen. We could have a major heating problem. That would be an expense. We can have a client, clientele that causes damage. And we could have an electronic. And those are the three major expenses, areas of expense. And I think it would be impossible to tell you on any of them.
Okay, um, but in terms of the janitorial services, you want a fifteen percent increase. Um, the skirting, obviously there's a cost associated with that. Do we have any sort of ballpark on what those would be?
I'm, I'm I'm sorry, I am a little bit deaf and I forgot to put my hearing aids in this morning, so you'll have to speak up.
Yeah, I was just curious in terms of the um, the budget. So janitorial services, you, you're asking for fifteen percent more.
We're asking for fifteen percent more in the budget, not just janitorial services, but other things.
For all, okay.
Batteries, all of the things that we go through. We go through batteries in the doors like you would not believe. We, we, we buy them by the gross.
Um, and I, yeah, I see the on-site manager fees are about eight hundred and forty dollars a month is what you're projecting. Um, but the skirting, how much would the skirting cost?
No, I think we, we have them, yeah, it's about eight hundred dollars. It's, it's, we're paying, we're paying the um, janitorial company approximately thirty dollars a day to manage the, the pods. So we're looking for an increase. Um, but we know that you are restricted as well. You don't have a, a, an open checkbook, so we're certainly, um, you know what you can afford, you know what you, the, the pods are worth to you. And then you will come back to us with that number.
Great, um, and do you have an estimate on what the skirting would cost?
No, I couldn't even, I couldn't even, couldn't even go close to it. And we had, just as an example, we had one lock go wonky. By the time they would finish, it was six hundred bucks. That's about a thirty-dollar lock, I think, when you had the manufacturer. And that thing cost us about six hundred bucks to get fixed. So we have no idea what, what any of the, the, any of the tech, uh, technology stuff would cost.
So there is an ask in the decision for a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That includes inflation and does that include the skirting for the ask?
It does not include the skirting. I believe in our conversation, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, the skirting was about seven thousand, correct?
Yes, the skirting.
About seven thousand.
The original estimate that I, that I got on
Okay.
skirting was seven thousand. I think you're looking at that's probably a little closer to ten thousand now than seven thousand.
So that would be additional on the hundred and four thousand ask. Okay, so in our decision item, a little bit, excuse me, further down, we have a um, a total request for a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars plus the skirting. So hundred, hundred and fourteen, hundred and fifteen thousand is I think what the ask is for today.
Mm-hmm, and that, that would be pretty close, yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Councilor McGee?
No.
Last question and then?
This, and this is my last question. When you talk about propane and fifteen thousand dollars to move, uh, to, to put the gas line in, um, has, has anybody sort of said, gee, propane costs us twenty thousand dollars? If we just put the fifteen thousand dollar line in, we would save that much money. Has, has anybody sort of projected that or is that?
It was, the, 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 the cost was estimated by a plumbing company.
And what do we pay in propane?
What are we paying on propane? A lot less than that, I can assure you. Um, I have the numbers right here, actually. Expense budget, uh, to, to, to superior propane, we're paying approximately two hundred and six dollars a month right now.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much.
If you wish, I can, I can leave this with you.
Is that a new one? Yeah, that would be great, good, thank you. Oh, we do, okay. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming. Um, we're going to be discussing this a little bit further along in our decision items uh, down the road.
I'm sure you will.
Yeah, so thank you very much, we appreciate it. Um, just for members of the audience and people online, just to keep in mind that this will be a decision item uh, included as well with uh, Warming Heart Center and Homeless and Poverty Reduction Society. And this is request for dollars coming out of our Rural Winter Shelter Program. That's a provincial grant, not a municipal grant, just so everybody knows what we're all speaking about. So thank you very much and we'll get back to you in time prior to your August twenty-first uh, committee meeting and then you'll have an answer to take back to the committee.
And I apologize for the short notice on that, but
That's okay.
we have to get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Uh, we'll call a ten-minute break and we'll reconvene at about uh, ten fifty.
Fifty, I'm going to take over. Um, Mayor Nancy Dotz have another meeting to attend at eleven o'clock and she'll be joining us just after that. Uh, we will move on to uh, our addition on the decision items. Uh, we have Tuckless Woodlife presented to us that addition item. Please go ahead, Doug.
Um, the subject, ten point nine five acre rural residential parcel is located at seventy-four, one, three, highway twenty-two. If you could just move it down. Nope, it's not going to work, that's okay. Do you have, you have the location map in your, in your package?
We do.
Okay. Um, the property, the, the property is districted Special Urban Reserve, which is S U R B. Um, the property was, was part of the lands annexed by the town in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. So it's on the other side of the highway twenty-two. Um, the applicants proposed developing a dwelling and two accessory buildings to replace those destroyed by the, the Buck Creek Fire. Unfortunately, uh, from what I heard, the fire affected theirs, but not the property right, right beside theirs. So just terrible situation that happened. Um, this particular area, the special reserve area, I'm thinking that it was, it was set aside by council to be future urban, in a future urban area. So it's a bit of a, bit of a, now it's mainly um, rural residential parcels on that side of the road. So I imagine at some point in time it'll be developed as a, as a, as a, as an urban area. Um, the applicant's asking council to forego the formal adjacent land or notification and advertising requirement uh, for discretionary use and to expedite, expedite the review and approval of the permit so they can construct a dwelling before winter. There's a bit of a time constraint here. Um, the applicant will need, however, a building permit and must provide detailed project drawings before applying uh, or the project couldn't, cannot proceed without safety codes approval. Okay, there's the, there's the map. It's the parcel on, on the right, lot two. You can see it's accessed by the uh, highway twenty-two. It's a bit of a interesting situation because they, to access their parcel, they have to go through the adjacent lot. Actually, I just noticed yesterday that the adjacent landowner actually, actually has to go through their lot to to get to their lot, property as well. So it's a bit of a, an access issue, but that they've got that sorted out from what I understand by, by caveat, it's on the title, so it's uh, um, yeah, again, the purpose of the S U R B district is to protect lands for future orderly and economic development. Provide for a limited range of temporary uses and allow existing agricultural operations to continue until such time as redevelopment occurs. Um, citing parcel coverage densities and building height shall be determined by the council so that none of the setbacks or densities or any of that is, is, are, are outlined in the, in the land use pilot. It's all up to council as to how that should proceed, so. Um, so be, because we didn't really have a guideline for determining setbacks, we, we use the A- Acreage Residential District, which is attached in the part, in the package uh, to determine reasonable setbacks. Um, the other issue with the parcel is that it's adjacent to a provincial highway. And as you know, it must meet their minimum setback requirements. Uh, seventy meters from the highway center line or no closer than forty meters from the highway uh, right-of-way boundary, except where those distances must be increased for uh, highway, highway widening. I don't know of any highway widening plans the province has. They always have them, but they're, whether they're going to do them or when they're going to do them, it's another issue. Um, the proposed development meets the setback requirements of the Acreage Residential District and Alberta Transportation setbacks. And the owner applicants are required to apply for a roadside development permit. Of course, any development on the highway requires that. And then, so again, the next step would be for council to decide whether to approve the permit. Uh, first of all, I guess whether you're going to forego the, the normal um, notification requirements. And then whether you would like, would want to approve the permit with conditions, refuse of the permit and provide reasons or send the application back to the applicant for review and revision. The applicants are actually here today? Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Doug. Uh, and yes, the applicants are here today and uh, we are sorry to what, what happened. I mean, nobody should go through something like this where you lose your home and you have to rebuild. So first of all, um, you know, uh, kudos to you for your perseverance and um, we understand the hardship that you're going through. So having said that, let's open it up to questions or comments from the council. Is there any questions for Doug?
Just a, thank you. Just a quick one on the, on the access. Um, that's, that's been settled. There's no issues there. Like, it looks like there was a bit of a, an access point there worked into the, into the lot boundaries. It, it just looks like it's overshot a little bit there, but there's, there's no issues.
And no issues as far as they're concerned. I'm not sure, I, I just noticed that yesterday. I'm not sure about whether the other gentleman has access through their spot, but um.
Yeah, it almost looks like there was a combined access was the original plan.
Yeah.
But the, the alignment of the access itself kinda goes, goes a little off the, the, the boundaries there. I just wanted to make sure that there's, there's no, once you get going, there's, there's not going to be a, a, a complaint from the neighbor for getting access on that through, through their lands.
Yeah, I explained that to them and I, I've seen in the past where, you know, there's a problem between neighbors and all of a sudden the fence goes up. Sorry, you're not getting, getting to your property.
Judy, if you would like to.
I wanted to make sure that that's.
Yeah, and, and that's all I'm, that's all I'm looking at. I'm just trying to avoid an issue in the future. Just want to make sure everybody's okay with the alignment of the, of the access. Come, come on down if you, if you'd like to address that, by all means.
Um, the, the access road has been there between the two parcels since the early seventies. And it's always been co-joint and co-cared for by the two lots that are up there, A and B. And yes, a part of it is on their land and a part of it is on our land and we just care for it together.
I and, and, and that's, and that's great and I, and I, and I'm not trying to, I think we should go ahead with this. I, I just, you, you folks should be aware, if, if it ever changes hands then somebody who, whoever bought it could establish their boundaries and say, hey, you guys are driving across my land. That's, that's all I'm looking at is future, is there going to be a, an, an issue there? But if there isn't right now and everybody's, everybody's happy with the way things are, then I won't.
We actually just purchased this property in January and there is an agreement in our.
Oh, it's on the title?
Um, yes.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
There should be one on both titles, but uh, we don't, we don't, right.
And then I just wanted to address something Doug mentioned about height and whatever, like the insurance is just building exactly what was there. So everything that was there is just being replaced. There's nothing new being added or, and it is being built right at the site that it was. So there's no issues with distances to anything as well. Nothing's changing. Yes. Thank you.
Perfect, yeah. Thank you, Judy. Is there any other questions from council? Okay, um, is there any council that would like to make a motion then?
Just want to just want to highlight that we're looking for two motions. One motion to forego the normal notification process um, in favor of gaining some time here and nothing's changing. It's simply a replacement for, for property damage throughout the fire. So that would be uh, one motion. And then the second one being to actually approve the development permit. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alvera. Um, so I guess the, the first motion, anybody else? Councilor Maggie?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Agamanna. I would make a motion that council waived the formal notification process for development permit, D twenty-three dash oh three five.
Thank you, Councilor Maggie. Is there any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Thank you, that passed unanimously. Um, is there any other councillor would like to make the second motion for us? Councilor Bellas?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that council approved development permit, D twenty-three dash oh three five, subject to the conditions listed in attachment nine.
Thank you, Councilor Bellas. Uh, any questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, now we have nine point one, but we're going to move that for a little bit later on the agenda. So we'll go to the nine point two agenda item. Text amendment to land use bylaw twenty twenty dash twelve dash D, D C one, direct control one district and redistricting part any one quarter, eight, four, nine, seven, W, five, P, M, from Argent to S Park and D C one. And that will be Peter Ruana presented to us. Hi, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as explained in the, the public hearing, that's the amendment to a text amendment for the land use bylaw uh, to bring it in line with Municipal Government Act and repeal the three bylaws. Um, do I want? Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong bylaw. Um, this is a text amendment and redistricting.
Right.
Right, for um, northeast quarter of eight, forty-nine, seven, west of the fifth. Uh, redistricting it from um, Argent to uh, to Special Parks and also to Direct Control One. And this is a, both a text amendment to create the Direct Control District One and to redistrict the lands, uh, as I mentioned. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from the council? Councilor Maggie?
I only have one question. As I was looking through it again, and we've, it's been before us a number of times and generally we have uh, support. Uh, I was thinking about uh, why we decided to go with park and direct control and why we didn't just take the whole parcel and put it under direct control. Is there, is there some specific reasoning behind that?
Um, I guess a practical reason is that we have the existing park and it is districted park. Yes, and so all we're doing is expanding the existing districting of the, of the park area uh, so that it is park. And, and from a standpoint of direct control, I think it's important to understand for council, uh, why do you have direct control? And uh, I mean, in this particular case, you've got park and, and most of the decisions would be made administratively, but any future plans would come to council in terms of what the park would look like. But generally, direct control is something whereby there's, you know, it's something that doesn't normally fit into your land use bylaw. And in this particular case, the park does fit within an existing district. And so that's why it was designated the way it is.
If I wanted to build a brewery, uh, I would have to come back to council uh, to get permission in a park area.
Uh, that's an interesting question. I, I guess, yeah, I mean, we don't normally envision that type of land use in, inside a park. I mean, it's, it's a different issue if you are permitting drinking in a park versus actually having a brewery in a. I mean, it's, it's a different issue if you are permitting drinking in a park versus actually having a brewery in a park. And that's covered, that would be covered under different statutes to, to allow that type of activity in the park. But as a, as a specific land use as a brewery, no, it, it would typically not be found in a park.
Yeah, so it's actually, we're really designing it for what it was meant for it.
That is correct.
And then we have direct control that we can use for whatever we choose.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Evans?
We're talking about two separate pieces here. One a park, one direct control.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, can councillor make a motion? Councillor Clark?
I will, am I on the right one here? That council gives second reading bylaw to twenty twenty-three dash oh five dash D, as presented.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the questions. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. That's carried. And now we'll move on to the agenda item nine point, oh, sorry. Okay, so there's another motion. I'm sorry, is there another councillor would like to make a motion on the second motion? Councillor Maggie?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gomana. I would make a motion that council give third reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash four dash D.
Okay, any questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? No, opposed? That's carried. Thank you. What we just did, because the first reading was done on a different council meeting, I don't think we need to approve for council, right? So it should be good. Okay, now we are moving on to the agenda item nine point three. Once again, it's Mr. Vanna who's going to present to us, Land Use Bylaw Text Amendment twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash D, Community Standards Bylaw. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular text amendment to the land use bylaw addresses the redundancies and, and conflicts with the Community Standards Bylaw. Public hearing was today, and no comments were received. The recommendation is that council give second reading to the bylaws presented, and that council give third and final reading to the bylaws presented. Let's conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments on that? Administration? Okay, seeing none. Is there any councillor that would like to make a motion on that addition item? Councillor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council give second reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash D as presented.
Thank you, Councillor Evans. Any comments or questions on that motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? That's unanimously carried. Is there a third reading on that as well? So we'll move on to the third reading and the motion. Is there any councillor that would like to make a motion on that? Then, Councillor Evans, thank you.
On a roll, may as well keep going here. That council give third and final reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash zero six dash D.
Thank you for that motion, Councillor Evans. Any comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now moving on to nine point four. We have Shelley who's going to present to us. What's that? Nine point one. We are going to do that a little bit later on the agenda when Nancy comes back.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of council. In two thousand and two, the town of Drayton Valley created a utility bylaw in order to put standards in place for residential, commercial, and industrial users of our wa, water, wastewater, and storm systems. This was to be a tool for administration to ensure proper use of all areas of our underground infrastructure. Unfortunately, this tool has not been enforceable as the enforcement penalties and fines were not included in the original bylaw. Staff have had our time getting users of our infrastructure to take the bylaw serious, as they have not had any repercussions from the town of behaviors such as the following infractions. Disposal of fog, fats, oils, and grease into our sanitary system. Fine silt disposed into our sanitary sewer system. Tampering with town water infrastructure, water meters, CCs, fire hydrants, et cetera. Discharge of unauthorized fluids into our sanitary storm and sewer systems. These types of infaction, infractions have had remediate, have been remediated at the town's sole cost since the bylaw has been created. Proposal is administration has amended the current utility bylaw for council consideration with the following changes. Minor grammar changes and revised standards and, and regulatory titles. Restructured definitions. We merged all bylaws and amendments pertaining to utilities, Water and Sewer Rate and Collection Bylaw two thousand and nine dash fifteen dash E. Amended Water and Sewer Rate Bylaw twenty eleven zero two dash E. Utility amended bylaw twenty twenty eleven dash E, and the original Utilities Bylaw two thousand and two ten dash E. We've added the fee schedule to refer to for the water and sewer rates. We standardized grease trap requirements to be plumbing and drainage institute certified and comply with American Society of Engineers. We've added the sustainability clause from, in amended bylaw two thousand and eleven two dash E, and have added a means of enforcement, which is the biggest one, to, adding a schedule C for fines and penalties. And that is really all that we've made changes to on the bylaw. Legal and risk implications, ability to more effectively enforce the town's utility bylaw. Organizational impacts is to improve efficiencies and effectiveness in enforcing towns' bylaw. Service implications without the ability to enforce our own bylaw, we will continue to struggle in aspects of our water and wastewater networks. We align this with the sustainable infrastructure planning, stakeholders in communication. Businesses will be notified by way of delivered letter to inform them of changes to the utility bylaw, as well as given a date of which they need to comply with when agreed upon, if we agree upon. Residents will be notified of changes via the town of Drayton Valley social media platforms. Next steps is to, following the passing of the bylaw, enforcement services can be again enforcement of the amended utility bylaw. I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Shelley. Is there any questions from the council? Administration. Councillor Evans?
Seems I always got questions for utilities. Just, just a couple of little things here, Shelley. B O D, biological demand. Should that be biological oxygen demand? I, I know I had misquoted it years before. I always thought it was that, but.
In treatments, it, it is bio-oxygen demand, but in, in the, in the collection system, it doesn't get to that point. So it's not, that's how we regulated in the collection system, not in the treatment system, basically.
Okay, so we don't need to change that definition then. The plumbing codes and standards for sewer on private property, so that's two point three D. Does that, do the standards include a check valve? For a sewer line?
They do.
Yeah, okay, okay. So we'll be able to enforce that, make sure when they put in a new sewer line, they prevent backup.
Correct.
Okay, that's all, that's all I had.
Thank you, Councillor Evans. Councillor Maggie?
Two quick questions. The, have we had any communication, or we've probably had ongoing communications with people that are actually contributing to our bylaw?
Yes.
And so what I'm, I guess my question is, is they're all prepared, and we'll get the letter, and we, do, do we anticipate a pouring in of folks from the public that are going to be affected by this, coming into council chambers?
A lot of the, the things that we're adding for fines and penalties really kind of go towards the industrial, commercial users, more so than the residential users. We don't see particularly in the residential areas of them contributing to any of these aspects. It's more the, the businesses throughout the town.
And so would, would, would we see them coming into the chamber saying, we object, I've been dumping my, my waste and my stuff for years, and now all of a sudden you're wanting to find me for it?
I mean, there is always that potential, of course, but.
Okay, so you didn't, you're not anticipating, but we'll communicate it. That's, and then the, I'm thinking of how many people would actually not understand that, that's a particular issue.
Most of the, the problem areas that we have, they, they understand. They just don't tend to do anything about it. So this is just our way to, to get them to move on it a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Maggie. Any other questions? Councillor Clark?
So I see lots of reference to like plumbing codes, different, you know, Ministry of Environment and Protected Areas. And, I mean, over time, those generally change with government changes and those sorts of things. Would it be worth changing that stuff from those specifics to authorities having jurisdiction? So then you don't have to worry about updating names and ministries and apartments and codes and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, generally, the names of those don't change that frequent. It's just the, the information within them. That's why we put them in there that way, so that they can refer to those different codes and standards. If we remove that, then they're not going to really know where to look and what those standards look like, so.
Whose they? Is that the kind of the public?
Consumers or the customers, yeah.
Yeah, just a, just a thought, because I've, like, I've seen lots of standards and bylaws and those sorts of things. And generally, like I said, things change over time, and, and if you can kind of keep something consistent, you don't have to change it as the times change. But anyway, I'll leave that to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Just thinking the same line as Councillor Maggie, Shelley, just impact to the community, impact to the businesses, right? So you're, you're saying that you've had conversations regarding some of these concerns, and, and they've, they know that this is a concern.
Yes.
And there, there will be some financial implications for them when we pass this, I believe.
Well, I mean, we would obviously want to start with a warning, just so that they, they know that this could come next. But we need some way to enforce it, or else we're going to continue to have the same problems that we're experiencing now. And it, and most of it is from the silt and the, so that like the car washes, for example, not cleaning out their, not doing their maintenance within their building. It just keeps them more accountable for their actions. And then some of the businesses releasing that, that grease that accumulates faster than anything else in their system and, and causes problems for us.
I guess I have a couple of questions. The first one would be the timelines. You know, we know Drayton Valley busier and getting busier and busier. It's hard to find contractors or people to, to do the work. So we, we will be giving ample time for them to adhere to the code, I guess.
My general rule of thumb is as long as they keep in communication with me and I see some progress moving forward, then, then I don't act on those until I need to. If they start not responding to me, then we have a problem.
Right. And the second piece is actually the solution, right? You know, sometimes can, can they actually implement the solution, or is there a way of, you know, workaround for the, the solution that we're proposing?
Well, a lot of these things, like when they have grease traps in place already, those, those tend to be grandfathered in. We can't really force them to change to what we have, but if they have to replace, we expect them to replace to our standards. And then they have to keep record of, of all of that as well, so that we can see. But other than that, I wouldn't necessarily say, hey, like, you've got to replace this grease trap with this certified one, when it's been in there for a while. As long as they maintain them properly to their code, to their specifications, then we won't have a problem.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Evans, you have a question?
So I think, you know, when I, when I went through this, it's, it's, it's pretty standard fare. You know, referring back to like the, the building code and stuff, it just saves you from having to write out a whole, you know, the, the new building code. And, and it gives any new design or, or new construction that place to go to find out what the expectations are. So this generally seems to be more to give you the leverage, if you will, to, to get people to make the changes that are required.
That's right.
Right now, you can just ask them, but you can't really back that up with anything.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. And, and, and again, I looked through this, and, and the specifications required, all that other stuff is, is, is pretty, pretty standard. I think very similar to bylaw that I put together years ago.
Yeah, we, we definitely used other municipalities' bylaws as, as references on how we were going to structure this in.
Yeah, which makes sense, right? Why reinvent the wheel? And again, we all, every municipality kind of points to those standard documents for, for guidance. This just again, gives Shelley the opportunity to, to tell people, okay, make the change, we'll work with you. But if you don't, this is ultimately what will happen. So when you don't have that, people tend to leave stuff.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for that, Councillor Evans. And one more, okay, go ahead, Councillor.
So two things. One, we talk about, you know, any business or group that deposits, et cetera, et cetera. All costs will have an additional 10% administration fee. Would it be, I guess, more, have more teeth, it was called a fine as opposed to administration fee?
No, that's a part of the sustainability fee, so that's just merged from a different bylaw into this. That, that's all I did there.
And then lastly, I don't see any reference to, if there's, you know, I'm assuming there's potential for Alberta Environment, or say DFO, or somebody to levy fines against, somebody maybe who dumped something illegally.
They, they don't generally. They leave it up to the municipality. When it's our infrastructure, it's our problem.
Right. So let's say our ponds get contaminated with something, we, we don't catch it in time, gets dumped into the river.
It's our responsibility to find who did it.
Right.
And then have them remediate it.
Yeah. So would there be any fines levied against the town in that case, or the individual, or?
As long as we can find the culprit, generally no. Or if they investigate enough to see that it's from a town source. Generally, that doesn't happen as long as we keep that open communication within an investigation like that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, would it be worth throwing in there something, any, any fines or any, anything like that associated with these will not be put on the town, they will be passed along, or they will be?
There is a clause in here for any unauthorized releases at their sole cost. There, there is a clause in there where that is, that's great.
Yeah, I see associated with the remedy and, and or rehabilitation, but a, a fine from a government body is not a, you know, it's not a remedy or rehabilitation, it's a fine, right?
Yep, and they would actually go after them directly. We would have no involvement in that. So we could place it in the bylaw, saying that that's a potential, but, I mean, realistically, that's the, the regulators that deal with that.
Thank you, Councillor Clark. Any other questions? Okay, I guess Councillor Maggie is ready for the motion.
Okay, we, Deputy Mayor Gomana, I would make a motion that council give first reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash zero one E as presented, with, with one question, if you could. So walk me through how I catch the guy or the person that put the grease down the, and so am I sending a, a young fella dressed to the nines down to look at that?
No. Generally, it's through camera imaging, or just based off of, like, when our, when our flush truck goes in, it, it measures the length of line that's in, in there, and then we can pin exactly where that problem has started.
So it, it can be done and pointed to.
Without having to actually enter the system.
Perfect, thank you, Councillor Maggie. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? That passed unanimously. Thank you, Shelley.
Do you want to go to the next reading?
Absolutely. So, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry?
Are we looking for?
Yeah.
Are we looking for?
Do, do we have to put, put this out for public?
We are looking for three readings, so we're looking for first sec, or first and second, and then a unanimous consent, and then a third reading if possible, so.
Perfect.
Just the second reading next, thanks.
Sounds good. Sorry about that. So yeah, is there any councillor that would like to make the motion for a second read? Go ahead, Councillor Evans.
I'll make the motion that council give second reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash. I'll make the motion that council give second reading to bylaw 2023 dash zero one dash E as presented.
Thank you, Consul Evans. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question, all in favor? It's carried. Uh, is there any councillor would like to make a motion to, uh, consider the third reading of the bylaw? Consul Bellas?
Thank you. I move that council unanimously agrees to consider a third reading to bylaw 2023 dash oh one dash E.
Thank you, Consul Bellas. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question, all in favor? That's carried. Any councillor would like to make the third reading motion? Consul Clark?
Uh, I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2023 dash oh one, is it P?
Or should it be E, sorry?
Uh, as presented.
Thank you, Consul Clark. Any questions or comments on that motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the question, all in favor? That's carried unanimously. Well done. Thank you, Shelley. Okay, now we are going to move on to addition item nine point five. And that will be Ms. Strand, who's going to present that to us, the Government of Alberta Rural Winter Shelter Program grant allocation.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Um, this is in follow up to the two delegations and the request that were in earlier, um, on the agenda, the Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation and the Homelessness Poverty Reduction Society. Um, first, I'll just give some background. Um, in 2022, the town of Drayton Valley received a Rural Winter Shelter Program grant from the Government of Alberta to provide a shelter, shelter for people experiencing homelessness for the term November 1st, 2022 to October 31st, 2023, in the amount of $179, or $179,260. Um, the daytime shelter program, after receiving a proposal from the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society for the operation of the Warming Heart Centre, council directed administration to move forward with a service agreement between the town of Drayton Valley and the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society to provide a daytime shelter program with support funding of $48,000 for one year, beginning November 1st, 2022, funded by the Government of Alberta Rural Winter Shelter Program grant. After receiving an additional request from the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society in May of 2023, an additional $7,650 for signage, storage, waste disposal and janitorial was allocated from the grant, making the total allegory allocation for the grant funding period November 1st, 2022 to October 31st, 2023, $55,650. On January 1st, 2023, a five-year emergency shelter, shelter transfer and operating agreement was signed between the town of Drayton Valley and Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation for the operations of the Shelter Pod Program. The first operating year is being funded by the Government of Alberta Rural Winter Shelter Program for the period January 1st until October 31st, 2023. Therefore, the $48,000 allocation in the 2023 municipal operating budget has not been used. The first operating year of operating costs were higher than the regular forecasted amount of $48,000. Therefore, the realistic amount of $72,327 for the 10-month period was allocated from the grant. Then after receiving a request from Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation in May of 2023, an additional $15,000 with $9,000, um, for the site manager and $6,000 for the incidental damage repairs was allocated from the same grant, making the total allegation for the grant funding period January 1st, 2023 to October 31st, 2023, $87,327. There was also some internal expenses that were funded through the Rural Winter Shelter Program grant, including the full pod operations for November, December of 2022 in that first year at a total of $11,841.28, plus community services staff wages of one day per week for the full 12 months for data collection and reporting that is required by the Government, Government of Alberta for the term of the grant. So the total revenue for the, the initial grant was $179,260. Um, the total expenses, um, listed here were $165,671.50. Therefore, the grant remaining, um, is $13,618.50. So that brings us to now. So the town of Drayton Valley has received additional funding from the Government of Alberta to continue to provide shelter for people experiencing homelessness for another year, ending October 31st, 2024, in the amount of $179,260. This amount, in addition to $13,618.50 remaining, which is confirmed to be carried over, totals Data collection and reporting are still required by the Government, Government of Alberta for the term of the grant. Therefore, community services staff wages of one day per week will be allocated to the grant for a total of $10,936.20. With this being the only internal cost projected, the amount remaining is $181,942.30. So for the daytime shelter program, the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society are requesting funds, funding for rent, utilities, insurance, cleaning supplies, PPE, waste management and office supplies for a total of $60,800. And the, those expenses are listed there. The Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society are also requesting an additional $40,000 for the period November 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2025. The guarantee of these funds is needed to secure a two-year lease agreement for the Warming Heart Centre location, so this building can be utilized for the foreseeable future. This amount cannot be allocated from the provincial grant, as this is a multi, this multi-year lease will surpass the grant funding period. A budget approval from council is required to secure these funds in 2024 if it is anticipated that provincial grant funding will cease to op, to exist as per October 31st, 2024. The Shelter Pod Program, uh, the Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation is requesting their previous amount allocated of approximately $7,200 a month, which is based on, um, the reporting that they've done, um, thus far. Um, with this funding, funding now being allocated for a full year of operations, they've asked us to consider the cost of inflation by 2% and requesting an additional $10,800 for the manager wage. Also, a $6,000 contingency fund for unexpected damages and repairs were also requested. So their total request, um, that was, was, um, submitted previous to the presentation today was $104,928. So the summary of requests, uh, for the period November 1st, 2023 to October 31st, 2024 is as follows. Uh, there's $192,878.50 available. Uh, there's $10,936.20 allocated for the, the staff wages for one day in the Community Services Department, the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society for this $60,800, $60,800. Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation for $104,928, bringing the total request to So then grant funding remaining would then be $16,214.30. Um, so I, I, administration did do a review of these requests. Um, both the Warming Heart Centre, uh, Day Shelter Program and the Shelter Pod Program are both being well utilized with the most recent stats from July showing that there is six, there was 65 unique individuals using the Warming Heart Centre and 35 unique individuals using the Shelter Pods. The Warming Hearts Centre Day, Daytime Shelter is serving as the hub for services and currently offers services by FCSS, the Elizabeth Frye Society, the John Howard Society, Opportunity Home, counselling services, foot care, as well as meals and showers. The ability for people to access these services in-house will aid people to overcome the challenges that they experience, they are experiencing and maybe for them to be becoming housed. And I know, um, Mr. Prentice's comments were, um, he's, he's not seeing, um, lots of folks coming out of that situation. Um, we do have an FCSS staff that goes in, uh, twice a week and, and we know of at least three individuals that, um, have, have sought treatment, um, the treatment programs as a result of her connections with them. So we are seeing a small bit of success on the FCSS end. Although volunteer recruitment has been a challenge for them, for this organization, it, they are making efforts to continue to grow. The full-time space is the, is the factor that makes the program successful. Making the request, uh, to secure funding is critical. Thanks to the efforts of the Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation, the Emergency Shelter Program at the Shelter Pods, which was operated in-house for seven months, is now running smoothly with little resources required by the town. Knowing that the town has an obligation to the federal government to operate the pods for five years, we knew that we needed to find a nonprofit like Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation to take on the day-to-day operations. Although oper, although the operating costs are more than anticipated, it would be difficult for the town to operate the program in-house at this cost, considering the staff time that would be required from both the Community Services Department and Maintenance Departments. As facility management is their expertise, Humans Helping Humans are the best positioned organization to do this work and are doing it well. Should council decline its financial, financial request, the HHHF board may choose to end the operating agreement with the town. Finally, the facilitation of both of these initiatives covers the winter shelter emergency response portion of the town's emergency management plan. So financial implications, should council approve both financial requests, there would be a $16,000, there would be $16,214.30 remaining in the Government of Alberta Rural Winter Shelter Program grant. As far as next steps goes, administration will move forward with the renewal of the funding agreement, should council, um, request us to do so. Um, however, the HHHF agreement is contingent on their board approval. So the recommendations are that council approve the funding requests from the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society for $60,800 and Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation for $104,928, totaling $165,728 to be paid with the Government of Alberta Rural Winter Shelter Program grant funding, contingent on reporting requirements are met. And a second recommendation would be that council carry forward $40,000 of that $48,000 that was allocated in the 2023 municipal operating budget that has not been expended, um, as a result of this grant funding, um, and grant it to the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society for rent for the Warming Heart Centre, um, next year, should the provincial grant funding cease to exist as per October 31st, 2024.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Strand. Uh, there was a lot of information. Um, I guess, uh, if there's any questions, uh, for Ms. Strand or any administration, this is the time. Questions from the council? Because I was, okay, Consul Clark.
Um, so we're backstopping the, the pods at what, what dollar value did we throw at that?
So, um, council allocated $48,000 per year, um, to, towards the operations of the Shelter Pods within that five-year agreement. However, due to, um, receiving the Rural Winter Shelter Program grant, uh, that $48,000 is still untouched.
Great. Okay, um, and now we're being asked by the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society potentially to, um, you know, allocate another 40,000, correct? So, um, between the two, that's eighty some thousand dollars.
Correct. They're, they're hoping that they're getting some pressure to do a two-year lease agreement or lose the space. And so in order to aid in their lease agreement negotiations, they're looking for a two-year commitment. So one year being covered in the current ask and the other being requested out of the 48,000 in the budget that council committed, um, as it stands, on the condition that we do not receive future funding from the government. As always, we continue advocating for that funding, but just if, we, we can't commit those funds before we know whether we have that. So they're looking for council commitment for them to be able to negotiate a two-year lease agreement, um, in order not to lose that space.
Right, so, so if we decided to allocate an extra $40,000, um, you know, I guess my, my fear though is that they kind of ease off and they don't try to pursue any sort of other funding streams, right? And so, um, I guess I would like some sort of contingency in there to say essentially, you know, some reasonable efforts being made to, um, you know, cover those costs, right? As opposed to the town just forking over 40,000 bucks. Um, at the very least, I think, um, I don't know what you guys all think, but.
Thank you, Consul Clark. Uh, Consul Bellas?
In relation to that, also, my fear, if the government does not propose or continue on with the grant, then the $40,000 is not the only cost that's going to be asked for. They're going to be asking for operation costs as well. So now you're looking at a lot more dollars, should there be no government funding. So I'm not sure how we want to protect ourselves.
Well, that would have to be then separately approved by council. That would, this is simply so that they can focus on actually getting a lease for a second year. And if, if that were to happen, then they would have to, we, we, what, what I would do is a contingency, what I would do in the council motion is to put it on the contingency that, that, that they then operated for that 12-year period or only get paid at the, the months that they actually continue operating it. And so that would, I guess, if council chose not to, um, approve any other costs, then that would force them to have to raise some funds, because as we know that there are other costs, um, associated with running the daytime shelter. But, but you're correct in that, that is not the only cost.
And, and I think what we're proposing is that we not write the check for the additional 40,000 today. But, yeah, yeah.
Understand that, but I, I'm not sure if I'm prepared to commit our taxpayer dollars to a program that may or may not continue as it has in the past with grant dollars.
So just for clarification, so 80,800, uh, that's the first recommendation. And then, uh, that's for this year, right? And that includes the, the, um, lease cost?
Uh, yeah, 60,800 is the Warming Hearts or the Poverty and Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Ask.
Yes, sorry, 60,800.
60,800, which includes rent, utilities, insurance, cleaning supplies, PPE, uh, first aid, waste management and office supplies. So 40,000 is, um, as you can see, it's not the entire cost of operating it, it's just the rent portion.
Right.
Um, just so that they can, um, commit to a lease. So, yeah, I, I do think that the motion would have to be contingent on them operating and that no money would be extended unless they are in operation. But, um, I think this is like a twofold. Council wants to ensure that it's operational before committing money, but they can't, it would be hard for them to be operational without any sort of commitment on the same, um, way. So, um, if we can write some sort of contingency in, that's probably the best way to do it if council chooses to make that motion, terms of them fundraising and making an effort as well.
Personally, I, uh, you know, they're getting $40,000 a year rent. Uh, I'm not sure if anybody else would pay $40,000 a year rent. Uh, I'm not sure what tactic they're trying to use, but, and I'm not saying homeless and poverty, but the landowner, landlord. I just find it difficult that I, personally, I would not support the additional $40,000 at this time.
Consul Maggie? Thank you, Consul Bellas.
So I, I, I get confused fairly easily, but, um, this is an interesting, um, document that you've just put in front of us and I've had time to look at it, but. And I've had time to look at it, but in the end, all I really want to know is what does it, what does it cost the taxpayers of Drayton Valley? So, and if I listen to, um, Humans Helping Humans this morning, they, they're, they need a fifteen percent increase, they need some skirting, um, they need a lot of other things. And so I'm trying to formulate in my mind, in the end, the town of Drayton Valley as taxpayers, um, we have a line item in our budget yearly to help our best fortunate, you know, at, both at Warming Hearts and the pods, and it is sixty grand.
So it's forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I didn't even know that. But now, cause I just used a number because I thought then I, if I go out and, and I have conversations with the public who pay that bill, I can say generally, here is the price for looking after our unfortunate folks. And we only pay forty thousand.
However, because of this provincial funding, um, town has not paid anything thus far.
Right. So that's, that would be my start of the conversation. But we are now going, sort of slowly slipping into that point where we may need to put, uh, taxpayers' money into it.
If I may, so the forty-eight thousand dollars came to be the commitment that council made when we, um, entered into the conclusion that we were going to purchase that first shelter pod. Um, and that at that point, I believe it was in the twenty twenty-two budget, I guess. At that point, we didn't know whether or not it was just, it, whether we're going to get any operating funding or if it was just going to be that capital portion and how that would play out. So at that point, count, then council decided to put a line item in the budget saying forty-eight thousand dollars a year is what we would, um, increase our entire community services F C S S budget by. Unfortunately, we had the funding, so we haven't had to use it. And so if, the idea being that if the shelter, we own a shelter pod, but we sold it, but we have an agreement. And if the government funding would go away, then there's a forty-eight thousand dollar line item in our budget to run that one shelter pod. But right now that money is not being touched because we are getting funding and we'll continue advocating for government funding, um, because it is a, the province should contribute to this issue in rural communities. So we'll con- continue advocating for that, but right now we're not using any taxpayer money, even though it is in the budget.
Thank you for that. And, and just one more piece to, to add to that. Um, it's because we purchased the one pod with the federal funding, the town has the obligation for five years to operate the one pod.
Yeah, that commitment. Um, so I, I think I, I better understand it now. Uh, and the, the thing I don't want to lose sight of is the amount of volunteers and people that actually do the work that, that, that it takes to actually have this happen. It's, uh, it's, um, it's extraordinary, as we've been told. Um, and for us to put a line item, uh, for next year on a forty thousand dollar lease, um, I certainly would have no problem putting it there with the contingency that, that we've talked about. So, um, but as I say, not losing sight of the amount of people that are engaged and involved in helping our less fortunate, I think, um, extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Maggie. And I guess there's decent views, different views on this. Just for, for my understanding, um, they would like the, uh, Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Committee would like a two-year lease agreement. But, you know, we, we, we can foresee this year with the, the grant funding and all that. We don't know what's going to happen in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So if, in your opinion, we just say that for this upcoming year, we are going to pass this, uh, do you think that would be enough for the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Committee to continue and then come back the end of the year? Or, um, is the landlord is gung ho that they need two-year commitment?
It's my understanding that the landowner wants a two-year agreement signed. Um, they're going, they're negotiating that lease agreement, um, this week.
Okay. Makes it interesting. Um, Council Evans?
So we're, we're carrying a forty-eight thousand dollar budget allocation that we hope we don't use, uh, we get, uh, provincial funding to replace. So i- i- are, are we required to, um, like, I know we've, we, we're, we're committed to the, the pods, so we need to say, yeah, we'll, we'll have that money available. But could we simply change the allocation of that forty-eight thousand with the understanding that if everything falls apart here and we don't get funding in the future, we're still, we'd still have to look at, um, the ownership of the pods to take that over? That, that would be a whole, a, a, again, budget discussion, uh, for next year, once the funding runs out, et cetera. Um, could we just allocate that forty-eight thousand to the backstopping, uh, uh, second year's lease, uh, instead of saying it's for shelter pod owner, ownership? Therefore, we're not committing to additional funds. We're just simply using those, those funds that we have sitting there that we're, we're hoping we'll never use. Does that make sense? I don't know. It, it gets us, it, it gets us to where we can, they can negotiate that second year, but we don't have an additional budget item that we're not really gonna, we hope not to use, right? We wouldn't have the forty-eight thousand and then another forty thousand budgeted, allocated, but probably not being used. We're, we're hoping and, and kind of assuming that the, the funding will continue from the province. This is just us saying we'll backstop you if it doesn't.
Okay. Thank you, Council Evans. Any other questions? Is there a councillor who would like to make a motion? This, I guess, Council Evans, uh, you threw out that idea, maybe? Uh, go ahead, uh.
They also made the additional ask of the skirting and there is sixteen thousand dollars remaining of that money. Um, so if council chose to include the skirting cost, then I would just increase the one oh four for Humans Helping Humans to one fourteen, saying that they could then upgrade the skirting. So it's either the one oh four status quo or if council wants to approve the skirting with the sixteen thousand dollars remaining, um, then there would just be the six thousand dollars remaining, sort of as a contingency for the time being. That way the funds are mostly allocated and, and they know that they're mostly allocated and they can kind of make use of what they have and find ways to make it work with that money rather than coming back to council, knowing that there is some funds remaining and coming back to council multiple times a year, potentially.
Thank you for that, uh, Alvera. Sure, go ahead, Council.
So do we, um, you know, the, the argument for the skirting was, well, I got a quote for six thousand, but things are so expensive, we, we need ten. Is there any oversight there? And, and, and say it, it comes out at eight thousand. What happens to the extra couple of thousand that they end up with? Like, 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 I'm just wondering how, it, it's, it seems pretty wide open as far as Humans Helping Humans and their, and their operations. They, they give us a big list and say, this is what it's going to cost. Not that I think we should be nitpicking every, every dime. I'm, I'm just wondering what kind of oversight is there? Do, do you review, uh, their budget and their costs and, and, and where that money is allocated?
So, so they did receive some quotes back whenever there was the opportunity to apply for the capital funding? And, and the quotes totaled, um, just under eight, eight thousand. Um, however, that's not current. That was back just about a year ago. Um, so, so it's, it's probably a fairly good estimate that those costs would have increased over the last year now?
Yeah, and, and I'm not arguing that. It, it, it's going to be around there. But, but again, we seem to be dealing with a lot, it's going to be about this much and about this much. You know, there ends up being a lot of, um, uh, dollars here and there that, you, you know, it's not going to be exactly ten thousand, right?
As per the agreement, um, we do require annual financial reporting for each of those five years.
Okay, and it's pretty.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty detailed.
Yeah.
And if they end up with some money left over, they reinvest that the next year? They carry that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Evans. Um, just for, I guess, understanding of everyone. So we have the grant funding for sixty thousand, eight hundred. And then, uh, the, the second recommendation is from Carrie Forward from last year for the, uh, allocated for the shelter pods, uh, which Human Helping Humans, um, I guess, took over that funding. So we have leftover and now we are proposing to, I guess, allocate that back to, um, the Warming Hearts for that funding, right? So, okay, um, I guess is there a councillor who would like to make a motion now? We have, we have coram.
So I'm going to make the, the motion number one there. Uh, but we're adjusting the Triple H funding to a hundred and fourteen, nine twenty-eight, which would adjust the total up to one seventy-five, seven twenty-eight? Okay, and that's the only changes I need to make? Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion that council approve the funding request for the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society for sixty thousand, eight hundred and Humans Helping Humans Housing Foundation for a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, totaling one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars to be paid with the Government of Alberta Rural Winter Shelter Program grant funding. Contingent on reporting and requirements are being met.
Yes, I will move that council carry forward forty thousand of the forty-eight thousand allocated in the twenty twenty-three municipal operating budget that has not been expended and granted to the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Society for rent for the Warming Hearts Center, should the provincial grant funding cease as per October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I guess the hope is that we will have grant funding, uh, by October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, but if not, uh, this will come to play. Uh, is there any questions or comments on that, uh, on the council? Seeing none, our last question, all in favor? That's carried as well. Thank you, Ms. Rand.
Thank you.
So I guess we have, uh, lunch is here, so we'll take a break and we'll reconvene at one P M. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we will reconvene our meeting at one P M sharp and we'll jump back into our decision items. We're going to circle back around two. It was nine point two for the second and third reading of text amendment bylaw twenty twenty-three dash four dash D to amend the purpose and process sections of the land use bylaw. Mr. Pete Ivanna, welcome back this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Did you want to wait for Council Maggie?
He's right here. Go ahead.
Uh, the purpose of the proposed amendment is, um, a text amendment to land use bylaw, uh, twenty twenty dash twelve dash D. Uh, the purpose of the amendment is to bring the administrative or legislative portions of the bylaw in conformity with Municipal Government Act regulations, uh, repeal three bylaws that are either ultra vileys, ultra vileys or not following the, the, the bylaws. And thirdly, to streamline the development process and improve efficiencies of the, uh, the processing times, costs and administrative resources. Uh, we had the public hearing today and, um, where I presented the, the bylaw in more detail. So I'm, rather than repeating myself, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Ivanna. Are there any questions in regards to this bylaw today? Uh, I do have a question. Uh, so when I look at page, I think it's page sixty-one, um, I have your deleting section one point one three duties of the Development Authority and replacing it with, um, one point one three. So, uh, just, I guess, to get clarity on with the replacement of this, um, for one point one three A one, assist and advise the council and the public. So that would give council the opportunity to know of development and subdivisions that are still happening within the community, right?
Uh, Madam Mayor, maybe I'll just, I'll back up. Uh, so I'll, I'll explain section one point one three for the duties of the Development Authority and Subdivision Authority. Uh, in this particular section, we're adding the component of subdivision authority because right now in the bylaw, it doesn't have anything about subdivision authority. I think perhaps, uh, the mayor, uh, for references, where we're one point one one on the, on the previous page where, where we are deleting the M P C and replacing it with the Development Authority and we outlined that. Yes, you're, you're correct. And, and one thing we, we can do administratively so that council is aware of any development application. This doesn't really change, uh, the process per se in the sense that applicant or the residents around an application get notified within sixty meters, um, or depending on if it's a rezoning or whatever, but essentially sixty meters, then a decision is made and then a notice gets sent out again of what the decision was. So this is just replacing council, coming to council all the time with administration doing the decision. What administration can do is as we send out the notices beforehand, uh, to the sixty meters, we typically would also send out notices internally to, uh, different departments as part of the application process. We can also send that to council, make sure that council is included as part of that so the council is aware of when an application, discretionary application is coming forward. And we can also include council in the decision part as well. So when that notice goes out, we can make sure that the council, council is aware of what the decision was. So that way, everybody's in the loop. Everybody continues to be in the loop.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. I think that way when we have residents coming to us asking, you know, what new subdivision or developments happening here, we're better able, be able to answer that, right? So I think for sure that's fair. So that is in, included in the new amendments then?
That, that's, that's a, that's a process item.
Okay.
Outside of the bylaw.
That would have to be in.
And we will, we will make sure that we amend our process.
Okay.
To actually include that.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for administration? If there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to, uh, give a motion for second reading to the bylaw? Council Evans, thank you.
I'll make the motion that council give second reading to bylaw twenty twenty-three dash four dash D as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question or debate on the motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Is there a member of council that would like to, uh, make a motion for third reading? Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion that council give the third reading to bylaw twenty-three dash four dash D.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question or debate on the third reading motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Ivanna, for that. And we're jumping back kind of all around the agenda. I believe we are on, is it nine point seven now enforcement services policy?
Correct.
Okay. And we have Cody here this afternoon that, uh, Mr. Thompson is away.
Sorry, um, it's, it's nine point seven because we, in addition, that shifted all the amounts, numbers back.
Pushed everything down, yeah. We had the, we had that development. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm just here today on behalf of General Manager Tom Thompson. We had a last minute switch. Um, just here today, um, enforcement services as part of ongoing reviewing our services, um, making sure that our back of the house is all, um, fit and as it should be. Um, we located some deficiencies within our current policies that we had in place. Um, as council is where Town of Drayton Valley Employees Community Peace Office As council is where Town of Drayton Valley employs community peace officers as well as bylaw officers. Part of that is both on the town's responsibility as well as officers' responsibilities. There's various legislation, case law, provincial policies and bulletins that regulate the different positions as it pertains to a peace officer and or bylaw officer. So what we are here today is to essentially bring in a short policy that council is enacting to allow the Town of Drayton Valley to have an enforcement services manual. In that enforcement services manual, there's various things included in there which, such as enforcement principles, outlining supervision, items required to be retained on H R files, uniform requirements, I D cards, code of conducts, working alone, notebooks, emergency response, et cetera. So as the, as legislation, as provincial policy, et cetera, commonly is changed, is commonly amended. What we're proposing is we have a manual that is, it's a living document and the C A O R designate is allowed to approve it kind of thing. So if all of a sudden today the the province sends down a new policy that we need to have in place or an amendment that we have to do, we don't need to keep on bringing those back to council every time for an amendment. That is just done through the C A O R designate. So again, the big part of this is to ensure that we're in compliance with legislation and the provincial peace officer policy manual, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Councilor Clark?
Well, I guess my question is, you know, if this is a manual, like, are we approving policy to create the manual or is that?
Yeah, the, the policy, so how it would kind of work is if I violated something of the manual. So the policy says an officer must comply with manual kind of thing, right? So if for some reason I don't comply with the code of conduct, right? Now I would be held accountable to this policy for violating policy slash the manual kind of thing. So it is, peace officer program is interesting. They change quite regularly what they want and don't want. So by having the manual as a living document, like I said, it just keeps, keeps us from having to come back on the monthly to amend our manual with council kind of thing.
I guess I would view it almost exactly the same as just an employee manual, right? Is that?
Yeah, it's, it's very, just specific to our department, yeah.
Councilor Gomana?
Thank you. Just curious, how is it happening now? For example, you know, if something that one of your colleagues or you do, how does that handle now?
Currently, we have a lot of lack because we don't have proper policy procedure in place right now. So for example, how the provincial peace officer policy often works is they don't, they don't give you a full policy. They just tell you you have to have a policy on it. If you don't have a policy on it, one, you're in violation of your authorized employer agreement. But then, two, how are you supposed to hold the officer accountable? So currently, because we don't have a lot of these things in place, we can't actually hold anyone accountable if they're doing something they're not supposed to for very job-specific tasks kind of thing, right? So if it's more of a generic and would fall under one of the normal town policies, obviously you can deal with them in that sense. But if it's a very job-specific, very limited right now. Okay, thank you.
There is, I mean, I, I, I'm sure council's aware, but there's, there's rules and, and, and things that we expect a peace officer to follow that we don't necessarily expect of other employees of the town in terms of their responsibility for enforcement. So this manual needs to be in place because we don't have these types of expectations set in place for the entire organization.
Any other questions? There's no other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Council Evans, thank you. I've, I've got this side of the room, I think, sleeping.
I would be delighted to make the motion that council approves enforcement services policy P S dash zero one dash two three as presented.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. Is there any comment, question, or debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to nine point seven, development permit D V twenty-three dash zero three four home-based business massage therapy. Mr. Douglas Woodlift, good afternoon. Is it Woodlift? Woodlift.
This is a development permit application D V twenty-three dash zero three four. It's the app, they are applying for a home-based business for massage therapy. Subject property is located at thirty-seven thirteen forty-ninth Avenue and is districted residential small parcel district. The purpose of this district is to provide for a single family and two-family dwellings on smaller parcels. And this district lists home-based businesses as discretionary use. And that's the parcel there. Thank you. The applicant wishes to start a massage business in one of the rooms in this dwelling. Canada Jaw Bank lists the massage therapy outlook for employment in Alberta as five out of five stars. So there appears to be a healthy demand for this service in the, in the province. According to B B B D C, small business accounts for ninety, ninety-nine point eight percent of businesses in Canada. Businesses with fewer than five hundred employees technically known as small and medium-sized enterprises are the engine of the economy, and their success is vital to Canada's prosperity. There are approximately six hundred and ninety-five small businesses in the Town of Drayton Valley, and we are a supporter of Small Business Week. The business will operate from eight to six Monday through Friday by appointment only. The applicant plans to install a fascia sign and provide two off-street parking spaces, which is probably kind of rare. This is a new business and the applicant anticipates up to four to five vehicle visits per day. And if the, she manages to build a client base, she plans to acquire more space and perhaps an office downtown. The proposed home-based business meets the requirements of section four point eight of the land use bylaw. And the municipal development plan directs that home-based businesses will continue to be part of residential areas. We referred this application to all the landowners within sixty meters of the subject property and posted it on the town website. And we did not receive any comments or concerns from any adjacent landowners. And next steps, council must decide whether to approve the permit with conditions, refuse the permit, and provide reasons, or send it back to the applicant for review and revision.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for administration? Council Ballas?
Thank you. You mentioned off-street parking. Where would that off-street parking be?
See that, the red vehicle?
No. Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Let me see if I can get this thing working.
Yeah, that's good. Where, where the little hand is?
There.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's two, she's got two spots in the garage and then there are two spots outside.
So that's his property.
Yeah, that's their property. That's correct.
Thank you.
So they would park, that's where they would park.
So not in the street. Councilor Gomana, did you have a question?
I was gonna ask the same thing, but I'll try to ask a different one. So a number of clients, it says twelve per day. Is that done through scheduling or how's that, it's gonna happen?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's a new business, so it's gonna take a little while to to build that up. But, yeah, four to five vehicle visits. So that would probably be four to five clients a day. So it's not, it's not a whole lot, but so I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, she's just, it's just starting out, so it's hard to know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and only one vehicle, one client per hour session, right? So there's not a lot of traffic going through this area of town. It's Aspen View, I'm looking at the picture, assuming there. If there's no other questions, is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? As my head goes to the right, Council Gomana?
I'd like to make the motion that council approves the urban permit D V twenty-three dash zero three four with conditions listed in appendix B. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on this motion? Council McGee?
Notice to the neighborhood, that all happened.
Sorry?
Notice to the neighborhood, all happened. We didn't receive any.
We didn't receive any, any comments, no.
Yeah, no comment. I think it's nice to see an additional home-based businesses in our community. I know that this is an area of high demand. We were just talking about how the need of all of our stressful massages are needed in around here, so we can appreciate a business like this and hopefully they'll see a growing clientele come that they'll be able to expand. And we wish them the, the best of luck in their new business adventure. If there's no other questions or comments, then a motion has been made, then I'll ask all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you very much. And that is it for our decision items, except for moving into closed. So I think before we move into closed, we'll go through our department reports quickly and then council reports. So starting with municipal services, Ms. Shelley Terry, come on down.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. So I'm going to go into our municipal department updates. Public Works Department was cutting ditches. It, it got a little slow there when the rain kicked in. So they, they're just catching up now. South Entrance, the restoration to the shrub bed there has been completed. D B Land, it was a little too wet for them to get in there to continue the cleanup, but it is still on the list to, to continue on. Sanitary sewer flushing and storm flushing was completed while the rain was kind of stopping them from cutting grass and all that. So they've been doing that. First calls are, are a bit crazy this year. There's been a lot going on. Long lines have been painted, if you guys haven't noticed, for, for the town. Parks Department, mowing and weed eating green spaces is ongoing, of course. C E T C ground maintenance was completed before a wedding. Work on the shrub bed at, at Discovery Park is ongoing, so they've been weed eating all the, the shrub beds and all that. They also helped with the work at the South Entrance. Staff is doing some flower bed and, and maintenance on the hanging baskets because some of the brackets were, were breaking. So they, for safety reasons, had to replace all of those. Utilities, hydrant flushing is ongoing. They've also started ramping up on winterizing of hydrants. There's four hundred and sixty-six fire hydrants in town that we need to maintain for winter. So, and it takes a lot to get all the water out of those barrels. Manhole lining, that was completed, and I've got some pictures up on, if you scroll down a little bit. So the, on the left-hand side, it's the old manhole and then the lining on the new, new side. So that's, that's what we got completed this year on a few of our manholes. There's a five-year warranty on it, which is nice, so we'll be watching it very closely. But it went very well and it's, it's a much better product than we used to use. It, it used to be a tar and there was no warranty on those. And, and some of the tar is already peeling off and some of those manholes that we've, we've done before. So this is a newer product that's been around, but it's a pilot for us, so. It's a poly, some sort of polyplastic lining. It's, yeah, it's a rubber.
Yeah.
It's almost like what they would do when they pull a liner through. And it also speeds up kind of the flow in that manhole as well, which is nice. Yeah. They turned out well. Pilot project for the wastewater upgrades will be delivered probably in the twenty-second, second, that's tentatively speaking. But they plan to have it up and running by August twenty-eighth, so we can start capturing data for the new upgrades that we wanted to implement in twenty twenty-six. Underground verification for distribution project is underway, so that, that project, they, they've figured out all the alignments of the piping and there's, they've got the, not, they're going into detailed design pretty quick here now that they have all that information. So that's exciting to see coming. Septic receiving station, we're waiting on a few parts and then they're gonna start the repair to the septic receiving station. Cell four E construction is ongoing and it's actually coming along really well. Tentatively, they think they're gonna be done by September fifteenth. So that's, that's pretty exciting, especially with the wet weather we've had. They've, they've really done well. Sidewalk replacements for this year have been completed minus the minor landscaping and some asphalt repairs. Fortis was on site to survey for the new streetlights that are gonna be going on Fiftieth, Forty-third, and along Ring Road in our portion of the property. They, they say it should be in, in by the end of October, as long as there's no conflicting underground infrastructure in the area, of course. And we know how that can be.
Yeah.
But they're hopeful that they'll have it in by the end of October. We started going through our twenty eighteen sidewalk condition assessment, and we're trying to come up with a better plan for capital planning for sidewalk replacements. Instead of doing just patches here and there, we wanna start replacing some of these really bad areas in town. So you'll see that in the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations. And I'm sure you're all aware fifty Ave is underway. So they are coming along pretty good from Fiftieth Street to the alley between Forty-Eighth and Forty-seventh. And the underground infrastructure is supposed to start this Thursday, and they're hopeful they're gonna get it all done before school starts. Now, any questions?
Perfect. Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Council Ballas?
Thank you. Not a question as much as down at the C E T C yesterday landscaping looks very nice, sprinklers are very nice. And then you go to enter the C E T C and there's bird droppings all over.
We're dealing with that today.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. And then just a question, too. Did we have both of our fountains that are installed, Sunrise and Omniplex?
Yeah, we've had some complications with the one at the Omniplex. Tri-electric's still working on what's going on there, but Sunrise is up and running.
Okay, good.
We also are, we should have the power ran for the C E T C fountain by the end of the week. And then hopefully by next week, we'll have the new fountain installed at the C E T C.
Nice, perfect.
We also put in a lighting panel so that we could run some lights on the deck for the wedding events. So it'll be nice to enhance that back deck a little bit.
Oh, great. Council Gomana, a question?
No, not a question, just excited to have the fountains. Are we gonna take a picture and then let everybody know about that?
We can, for sure. Perfect. We'll put it on social media.
Sure, thank you.
Council McGee?
To remind me, on the Fortis, a new street like Ring Road means, I'm trying to remember where. So it'll start somewhere and then go all the way down to?
It, it's gonna start at Cancote, at the, the gas station at South Entrance. And then go to our property line. We couldn't install on county property. Fortis wouldn't even really give us much of a proposal to do county property. So I don't know, I don't, that's not gonna be happening all the way through the Ring Road this year, but it's a discussion with the county on if they wanna continue on.
And where does the county properties start in there?
Um, it's like just before the storage place off the Ring Road, kind of in that area.
And then the lights will also pick back up around Forty-third to the Aspen View Pond, right? That little section?
Well, we couldn't do along the Ring Road, but we did do the new section of Forty-third. And the reason we couldn't do along, along the Ring Road is because the property line for the county is too tight there. So we, we can't do that little section to the, to the pond without county.
Oh, so we're not coming anywhere from the Aspen View Pond going?
Unfortunately, we can't, no.
So we have to advocate to our municipal partners to get that lighting put up.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And that's really dark back there, and that's where I think we had inquiries from residents that are walking, you know, kids and their pets back there at night.
Well, maybe the Forty-third light will help kind of illuminate in there.
Maybe, yeah, coming straight down. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much for your report and all the updates that are happening around the community. Moving on, we have Planning and Growth Services, Mr. Ivanna, ten point two.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I thought I'd give you just a joint.
Sure.
Back again, given what's going on in the division. So starting off with the, the planning area. We've been investigating a, a new system from citywide. We currently use citywide for our G I S and asset management. But they have a module that, it's quite interesting in the sense that it would, would allow us to have a, a permit tracking system and management system. It would tie it to, to, to property databases. And it could actually also do business licensing as well as some of our airport leasing and that type of thing. So it'd be a totally integrated system for this module. So we're currently reviewing that. It'll probably come up in the twenty twenty-four budget to purchase the module and, and get it going. Currently, council may be aware, we don't, we don't actually have a tracking system. We don't actually have a, a database where we sort of keep track of permits and, and that type of thing. It's sort of for us to find things and to have it integrated with property addresses and property files, it, it doesn't exist. So this would be a, a huge step forward. And a number of other municipalities already use. this would be a a huge step forward and a number of other municipalities already use the system. Like Camrose County, for example. So they, it is a really good, robust system. Town-owned land evaluation. So we're just finalizing that. I should have a copy of the report next week for the evaluations of the town-owned lands that aren't designated. This morning, I sent out an email to to counsel just identifying all the properties that the town does own. This is classified by land title designation. So what's what's a municipal reserve? What's an environmental reserve? What's a public utility lot? And what's a fee simple lot? So fee simple lots are basically, they're not tied to a reserve designation. They are town-owned lands. So the hope is, once, once we get all the information in, then we'll be able to to provide counsel with an idea of and a strategy in terms of where, how do we move forward in terms of, you know, if you wanted to sell or market particular properties as part of economic development initiatives and that type of thing, then you then you would have a price and and, you know, what lots are available and that type of thing. So we would have a marketing package that we could then utilize. Terra Loma Land, so that that item is is moving along. We drafted an agreement for them. Gave them gave them the agreement. We're just waiting to hear back from them. So the approach based on our our solicitor's advice was that we have an agreement. We registered caveats on on the title and that way, when when the titles change, the caveats and the agreements run with the title. So it would secure the town's interest for future municipal reserve when it it is taken in the future. Development Appeal, there is a an appeal coming on the crematorium use that counsel approved a little while back. The appeal scheduled for August twenty-eighth at one P M. Well, that'll be heard at that time. Moving into Growth Services, our labor market industry gap analysis and education needs assessment is the the RFP closed. We reviewed the RFPs that were submitted. We're just gone through a shortlist process and we're doing interviews on that. It's still on schedule to to be issued by August twenty-eighth at the latest. The melt program, we did receive a call from the the people that are running that up in Slave Lake and they were supposed to come down this week to evaluate our parking lot area to see if it if it's okay to run the program there. It they're just sort of wanting to get the ball rolling in terms of evaluating things down here. But the timing still is that it would be run later after they've got the Slave Lake program up and running. And the only other piece I wanted to mention to counsel is that we we have hired a new manager of Growth Services. And he starts on September fifth this year. So we look forward to to seeing him start. He joins us from the town of Edson.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Vanna? Counsel Gomani?
Thank you. Just wondering about the campus Alberta and is that going along?
That work continues on, so we haven't received any results from them yet.
Thank you.
Counsel McGee?
Peter, Terra Loma, have we had a discussion with the 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 folks with Terra Loma? Or you've just drawn up an agreement and shipped it off to them to look for response?
No, I had the, I had a discussion with them personally and explained to them what we're doing and and what it would be and and gave them the agreement after that. And so it's just in their ballpark right now, waiting to hear back from them before we move ahead to to have it registered. They need to sign off on the agreement. And then we'll bring it back to to counsel to sign off.
Okay, the only other question I had was the the development appeal. So that comes back to counsel. So we have an appeal or to come or who do you set up a DAB? The DAB sets?
Correct, yeah. It, because counsel's acting as a development authority, it can't come back to you. So it has to go to the subdivision and development appeal board. So those those members have been notified and a date's been scheduled and advertised, so it'll be on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Counsel Evans?
The melt program. So they're looking at whether there's enough room around the building and whether the parking lot is probably built to a sufficient standard to handle a large truck rolling around on there.
That's correct.
I guess I would just suggest that if we're walking around with somebody out there, that we do have all that room right in front there. I I think it wouldn't take much to probably build a a gravel road suitable to to be able to turn a truck around and do all the things that they they want to do with that thing once they get it in there. Because I doubt that what's there is probably big enough or built to a high enough standard to 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 roll around. But but we have all that land and it is possible to build something that's suitable without too much of a cost, I don't think.
Yeah, good point. Okay, well, thank you very much for your report. And we'll move to ten point three Corporate Services, Ms. Thompson.
Hello again. So in finance, we've been busy, are we receiving and processing assessment appeals? Reviewing tax aging reports after the twenty-twenty-three tax payment deadline and just looking to see where we're at in comparison to other years and what the next year will look like in terms of collection. Starting then preparing the documents for the twenty-twenty-four budget season. So surprised that we're getting close to that. So we're working on that, working with management to help with people, you know, and in the in management to help manage their budget to actuals around the start of quarter threes where we see the most amount of of dollars being spent. So finance works closely with management to manage those those budget actuals. And of course, we're working with the county and the government on the DRP application. That's the Disaster Recovery Program. And they've made some changes to what that looks like since the time it of that they announced it. So we're just trying to see how we can do this in a timely fashion. And there's a reason why it takes three years to process an application like this. And IT, of course, so we're working with Tom and Cody from Protective Services to work on the Security Cameras Project. And I believe in the next likely, I'm hoping by the next council meeting, we'll have a report that's brought to council as an update on what's happening with that project. Of course, we're still evaluating the cost and feasibility of a hybrid server solution and along with that, working with Ken and Vincent from Asset Management and GIS to solve some of our GIS software issues. And of course, IT is always busy supporting our employees with all of their computer software printing needs. And then just some other things. We're working on updating our records retention policy, so to be more clear and and just looking through it to see if the previous policy makes sense and where changes are needed just to improve that. And then, of course, just other policies that we're looking at that need to be updated. As you saw, we have bylaws and policies that we still have that are some upwards of thirty years old. And so just working through some of those policies and and bylaws that need to be updated. And we've been working, the mayor and myself have been working with the RCMP and reviewing our multi-year financial plan. And then, of course, as always, meetings with various stakeholders and managers to make sure that the organization and the projects keep on going. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Counsel Ballas?
Thank you. Can you update us on tax collections?
I don't have any information right now as to exactly the comparison from last year, but overall very pleased with how it went and very pleased with the fact that the wildfires didn't significantly impact the people's abilities to make tax payments. But at the next financial update, I will bring the better information as to comparing to last year. Overall, pleasantly surprised.
Any other questions? Counsel Evans?
Records retention. So currently, as we're making these changes to our statutory documents and stuff, are we just saving these new and improved and documents within the the person who produces them on their drive or on their computer? And and what I'm getting at, before you give me a response, is is there any way that Nathan can create a a a drive or a place that is password protected? And as we go through these documents, and I've got another suggestion as well, can we dump them in there with very restricted access? So people can use them, but they need to just take a copy out of that restricted drive or file. And secondly, can I suggest that we start getting a hold of the engineering companies that have that we know have done work for us over several years? Especially one that has done work for us for probably a decade or more. And get them to send us every document they have, every plan. It'll be, it'll end up being a Dropbox of some sort, obviously, but and just stuff them in that restricted area, whatever it is. So once we get a management system in place, we know they're there, we know they're clean, and we can simply dump them in there and we can start collecting some of these documents that we've we've that we don't have at this time.
Yeah, so in terms of our actual just records retention policy, that refers to the length of time that we hold on to documents, especially hard copy documents. So some records, most of our financial records, it's seven years. Some financial records, it's life permanent. And that kind of stuff, like legal documents. And so the government has like suggested timelines for all those different things. And then they leave it up to municipalities to work with those. And so we've been polling, I guess, you could survey municipalities around us to see like what what they're doing, what the best practices are. And then just updating to make sure that some of the stuff that we've been, that we've just have, that there's no need for, that we can get rid of. And making sure we don't get rid of things that we will potentially need in ten years. So that's that's in terms of what the records retention policy is. And then second to that, we do have a, our, all our records are kept on a, on us, on a drive that only records employees and their managers have access to. So I am, at some point in the next few years, certainly going to come to counsel, most likely to ask for more complex records management system in terms of how we store. Right now, it's an access database. Essentially, I don't know if counsel knows what what that is, but it's a a database that simply has the title of the file and where it's stored. And then that points to somewhere on our server or in our vault where the documents are, rather than a system where the files are attached and all in one system. And it it's an issue, it it's it's a server and like a cloud-based system would be very expensive because there's so much there. So we just have to do a bit more research. We can't compete with cities necessarily. Well, we can't compete with cities, period. But other municipalities, smaller municipalities are looking at better solutions because every, there's so much more being stored on a computer compared to hard copy documents. So that is something that we're working on. And then the final piece to your comments in terms of our missing documents. So yeah, we're we're making our way through what, seeing if we know what is missing and then putting the pieces together. And that, obviously, it takes a lot of time, but in terms of asking our engineering companies, like, yeah, we definitely can do that and then sort through those and file them. The the key is to file them in a way that makes sense that so we can actually find things later. And so it's just a big project and we are definitely making a lot of headways on it, but we have one employee in that department or in in that position. But they are making lots of progress and and she's very passionate about research and making sure things make sense. So I'm positive we can make you know, steps in a in the direction that we want to see. But I appreciate your suggestions and in terms of contacting our engineering companies, not a bad idea. We might have a lot of duplicates, but certainly we would, somebody could be, could be assigned to that task of seeing what they sent that we do not have and then putting the pieces together.
It 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 just seems like when we're when we're looking for old old plans and, oh, I'm sure we got somebody to put something together for this a few years ago. It seems like we can't find it and and it seems like when people are shuffling out the door, we're not really sure where they've where they've left all that stuff. So and 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 again, I I just know that a big company like, you know, Associated or something, they would have a file for us. And they would have everything we need and it would just be a chunk of data that we're just shuffling to a place, not necessarily somebody spending a lot of time going through it. And you know, and I'm familiar with a similar system to what you have, the, you know, Paper Tigers, what we had called it. And it's, yeah, it's it's good a lot of the time, but I I always found anyway, there was, there was only kind of one or two people who really understood what stuff was going to be labeled as or filed as and and were were very good at finding that stuff. It seemed like you always needed to go to one or either one of those people. And I understand you're working on a on a system. Just all I'm suggesting is we start gathering that that data and and restricting it and then having it available for for public works when we're asking about, you know, designs and and tenders and and stuff from from years ago. But I appreciate the amount of work that you're you've got in front of you to to get something permanent and and good in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, did you have another question?
Why is my mic on?
I don't know. Probably because Amila pressed it. Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll move along to our last department report, Community and Recreation Services, Mr. Von Claveren. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and through to you to the rest of council with the report for the Community and Recreation Services Department. So just a couple of highlights on the items that are reported here already as well. So with the FCSS, we were able to install a third phone, basically, a public phone in the Warming Heart Center, public wifi. So now there's three phones that are usable for the public that comes to those locations. And in this location as well, it supports the services that we provide over there and there has to be phone calls made by clients directly to other, let's say, social services, for example. The, in the Omniplex, the ice is in. That means that we are starting and we started already with camps. So winter is here, you could say. The thunder and camps are starting up. The second sheet of ice, which was going to be made here in the weekend, we are just holding off for a little bit. Maybe it's going to be the weekend as well, but the Drayton Valley Foundation, the Community Foundation, has the big event, of course, coming Friday. They at least investigated for us to maybe hold it inside if the weather is really turning, let's say, already to fall, I would say. So they keep that open, that option, so we might be able to accommodate them if that's the case. But the street party, of course, it's planned to be outside Friday, the eighteenth. And we hope that will still be happening. And in that case, we can make ice, of course, as we can please in our second sheet. But it's a great event that happens with the a lot of volunteers and activity group that makes that happen, the street party. So we hope that's still happening this Friday, August eighteenth, in our downtown corridor. Then for the Ricochet Oil Acquatic Center, it's busy. We have a lot of programming going on over there. And we see that, for example, in our staff. So we are ongoing recruiting and see, of course, it's young people that also move on to other jobs. And then we have new lifeguards coming on board to make sure that we can deliver all those programs. Another celebration that's upcoming is September first. That's Canada Day, or sorry, Alberta Day. I say it again. It's Alberta Day. Alberta is celebrating, of course, the incorporation of the province. And since that is on September first, the opportunity is to have activities happen first, second and third. So we are planning and there will be more information. So we are planning, and there will be more information coming out, to do that in town, in our Ivan To Park, together with the RV campground slash the museum. We were working together. We applied for funding and we hope we're going to get that from the province because they want to support, of course, activities that are happening and celebrating our province. The facilities, I mentioned already, the ice plant startup for the facilities itself. It's good to mention that, of course, safety is our number one. So when we started up our first sheet with the ice plant, we worked well together with our maintenance department, with the crews in the Omniplex and our contractors to make sure that we address the situation that you always run into when you start up a facility like that again. Make sure that our monitoring system was correctly in place and got the ice on time, ready and safely in. Our team is expanded right now. So we have Roderick McGinn is our basically third maintenance staff member. So we have now a crew of three. This maintenance worker will help for surely alleviate, of course, in the team, all the, let's say, basic support items that have to happen. A lot of work orders, a lot of items that are going on in our facilities. When we talk about staffing, I'm also involved with the technology innovation and environmental coordinator recruitment. That's a position, of course, that looks into new projects and new initiatives. Unfortunately, the candidate that we had lined up declined the offer, goes somewhere else, so it's still an open vacancy. So recruitment is not always easy and especially, of course, our agent, our department is full-time on that for all of the departments in our organization. Lastly, we have a lot of activities also coming up in September, so we are planning on those. So if you're thinking down the line in September, for instance, lanterns on the pond and National Day of Truth and Reconciliation at the end of the month. More information will come out later on. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Council Ballas.
Thank you. I just read this morning, I forget where I read it, but of a girls' softball tournament, September 8th to 10th. Is this something that you're aware of?
So thank you for that. And of course, the locations are booked. We know about that in our booking system at the Omniplex. But a lot of that happens directly with the field booking. So we're not always aware exactly what happens on our fields and how big it is. But I think this is a tournament that they applied for even a bigger tournament to get that to our community. So it's great and thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, I've been informed there could be up to 600 people.
Thank you. I think that has to do with the opportunity that they might get the, let's say, regional or provincial tournament. So if that's the case, we support that, of course, with what we can at the location. But it's great to see that and we know we have the accommodation to help them out.
Just a quick question in regards to the street party happening on Friday. If the weather does turn and then they're going to decide, at what point will they decide whether they're going to move inside? Do we kind of have a plan in place?
Yeah, I thank you for that question. I understand that Heather was hoping to get today the definitive answer. So they have to, of course, look a little bit ahead so they can plan for it. So I think today they will make a more of definitive answer on that themselves. So they can advertise and get the word out.
And then we'll have, we'll be prepared enough, I guess, if that does take a turn, that we'll be prepared to help them be successful and get this coordinated and happening and everything like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. That's good to hear because I know I seen the weather and was thinking if it rains, oh, I think it rained last year too for them. So it's nice that there is a backup plan. And I think that if it does switch, that, you know, we'll have to make sure that we send the message out and make sure everybody still knows that the party's on and, and we're still celebrating. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much for your report. We'll jump along to council reports, starting with Deputy Mayor Gavanna.
Thank you. There's not a whole lot to report. First, I had the opportunity to attend the youth advisory committee and discussed about the upcoming skate park jam and the role that the committee is going to play. It was another interesting and exciting meeting to sit with nine other teenagers and listening to what they have to discuss and all that, so.
Nine other?
Nine teenagers.
Not 900.
Yeah, I've been a teenager probably 30 years ago, 40 years ago. So, yeah, no, it was, it was good to sit with a young crowd and, and discuss about the, the future of the town and other aspects of how we can improve and keep youth in our community as well. On the 3rd, had the opportunity to welcome a potential new doctor from Libya. That hopefully will choose a Drayton Valley as their home. So we would probably know by next month or so that they're going to come here or not. On the 10th, attended the skate park jam. It was a good turnout. Weather was a little bit chilly and it was wind. But it was, there's lots of things happening as well as a lot of young crowd there as well. And special kudos to Councilor Ballas for his Instagram video.
Nice. Good job. Thank you very much for that. Council Clark.
Not a ton to discuss. Attended the Small Business Week Committee meeting. Discussed a few things, one of them sponsorships to get, to, you know, have some of the businesses around the community help pay for that, as well as some grants that should, you know, should be fairly easy to get to help support the Small Business Week. And then just kind of went over schedule of events. So it looks like there's going to be some speakers and all those sorts of things that come. So should be good. Other thing, this isn't necessarily council related, but I, I mentioned this to council, the business specializing in rural renewal stream, planning on opening an office in Drayton. Spend some time with them, their focus is on Iranian immigrants, but, but specifically skilled workers. So that's good for the town because we are, we are lacking some, some skilled workers in some pretty major areas. So that's good for the, for the town.
Thank you for that. Council Evans.
Not a lot of, lot to report from me. Taking care of a lot of personal business the last couple of weeks, other than our, our, our meeting the other day with council at CTC. That's about, that's about it for me for the last couple of weeks that I've been involved with. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Council McGee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the only meeting of note that I think we've already reported on, or certainly you have in your report to council was the Warehouser meeting. We went out to, to their site and saw the, the damage to the FMA and we are going to meet again. We're going to provide more information to council. We talked also, but we ran out of time for Dave Swindlehurst, who would be the silver culture and greenhouse, greenhouse business. So he's going to come before council and make a presentation in September, which you'll find interesting, I'm sure. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And Council Ballas.
Thank you. Also very little to report other than the fact that I also attended the skate jam and as Councilor Gavanna mentioned, it was windy and cool, but still there was a pretty good turnout and some good exhibition of, of riders. Other than that, a couple of minor meetings, but not too much happening.
Thank you for your report. Yeah, for myself too, I was away on holidays. Just had the Warehouser meeting and meeting with Minister Lagrange on rural healthcare issues and how we can be looking at, I guess, different solutions and what the provincial government's plan is in dealing with all of this. So yeah, hopefully, it looks like they have a, a different path that they want to go down. So hopefully we'll start to see some changes for rural communities like Drayton Valley. And I know that we're desperate for that. And that wraps up about my report and all of our reports. So I need a member of council to, I'm not going to look at you, to accept all the department reports and the council reports as information. Councilor Clark, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Do we have any council initiated items before we move into closed? Nope. Okay. I'm just trying to think here. I'm going to go through my list here for council initiated items. No, I do not. Okay, is there a member of council that would like to move us into closed? Council Clark, thank you very much for that. We'll move into closed at 1:57 PM. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everybody. We'll have like a five minute and then we'll... Yep. He's very excited about that, right? Somebody's got to use the restroom. There's sure some impressive baseball diamonds in Kamloops, hey? Oh, wow. No, we went through that way just because of the construction and then we regretted it as we went through. But then it worked out because that's where Jay bought his winning Lotto ticket.
Did he win?
$1,000 bucks on the way home, just as we were leaving Klono. Yeah, he went to, he checked it on the way out. So then we had to go back to the casino at the grand to cash it. So it was like, in Klono. Yeah. Which one? Oh, you mean go back to this one? Oh, the MDP? What do you think? Yeah. Maybe, yeah.
It's different than what was planned.
Yeah. Okay. I know, people, yeah. It's what it does, right? Yeah. I get it. Yeah. I'm a no, but I don't know what else everybody else thinks. We'll just bring it up as a quick, couple-minute conversation. Yeah. I know, what is this? I thought we were going to table like five items, right? I'm like, oh. Now what is?
They're, all of them had some conversation.
Especially in the morning, I was like...
Falling asleep. Get some chocolate or something.
Coffee. Kind of profi, profi?
This is my phone, it's like salt and beer. We have somebody coming in.
Were you in the interview for the growth services?
Yes.
So coming up, it's in, how long is it? It's in...
Your sheet.
He finds that or you?
That's fine, it's there. Then it was a dancer there. I remember myself in the dancer, so I went there yesterday and I went, I have it there. Now if it was there, that's his picture, the pictures, the map and blog. You have to have this concept before the concept, what need?
We have been...
I remember the visual. What's he, what's he? My tour, I remember putting, I remember going...
There's something...
So I'm putting it on, we all remember, we're going to start to put everything in this thing so we'll know where to find it. That's why I remember it's kind of... So nothing in there. So we could enter that food, but it's back in there. Then we go out to kind of like the main area, there's a whole bunch of mine there, I'm like, oh my gosh. And when she's working with Robyn and Av and everybody's going, right? So trying to get... It looks like there's a sponge, it's two presentations. I've seen like avocados or some... A bunch of other documents in there.
I know, I was in the...
So I was like, is this just like a... She's in the binder? I have to feed it, some of it, I need... Yeah, there's a lot there. I couldn't find something that's... And she said, Jen's shown it, we'll add it, our concept or downtown, we violated the same downtown. I'll check again, but I have checked my email, I have checked.
Sometimes I just think...
Because I was searching out.
Now I...
What did you not roll like that, so I won't just...
I understand, exactly. So that's, that's, that's one of the ones. You're in the interview.
Maybe this is it. Maybe it's...
Yeah.
There was a president, Broderin, Broderin is buying.
See the days. Something... So you need... Downtown Congress? And then we said our engineers. You know, on some season.
Whatever. See another world in a sense.
I think Peter's going to do something first now.
Mm-hmm. We'll just be, we'll be a minute, two minutes. Two minutes, right? I thought Colin came back in here. He doesn't. Let's lock him out. Lock him out. Uh-oh. Everything. Huh? Yeah. I know, right? Selective. Just keeps on going, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I... And that's it? Yeah. I think we all know that one. Okay. Universal. Okay, we'll jump into it. We have one item here from Peter, municipal development plan and land use bylaw review. Just a quick, I think, overview of what could possibly or not happen. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, I originally put this slide deck together because counsel had talked about the MDP, you know, where is it? When's it going to get done and all this kind of stuff? And then I also mentioned to you that your land use bylaw is a piece of junk as well. And you said, well, how do we fix that at the same time? And how long is it going to take and everything else? And then we got into the text amendment bylaw, so I threw in a bunch of the text amendment bylaw into it. So needless to say, it'll be a lot shorter presentation then because we've already dealt with the bylaws. We've done that part. We've done the heavy lifting for today. So let's talk a little bit about, you know, what needs to happen as part of an MDP review and a land use bylaw review. There's two ways to really deal with it. There is a standard way that most municipalities deal with it that is, is long and laborious and takes time. And so it's, it's a two to three-year process and, and there's lots of public consultation and everything else. So I've looked at your bylaws and my, my sense of it is, is this. A lot's been happening over time. The problem is that you've got the original documents here and nothing sort of kept up. It's never been reviewed. So one way, the way I'm looking at it and the way I'm approaching it is that if you take what you had and you update it with the information that's happened since then, it should, you could be able to shave off time and effort in order to update your MDP, first of all. And then in terms of the land use bylaw, I've looked at that every which way. I, I've said, what happens if we just blow it up? What happens if we slice and dice it and change sections and do this? I mean, at the end of the day, I think you're going to have to blow it up and, and start over again. I hate to say it, that your previous bylaw was better than this bylaw. I'll leave it at that. So when we talk about scope, why are we doing it? I mean, first of all, your documents need to be clear and they need to be concise. They need to be understandable to the public. They have to be user-friendly as documents. And they need to be current, right? So that's really the objective behind it. When we look at, you know, what's the benefit of that? Well, first of all, you'll have an updated vision of where you want the town to go. And that's really important because as, as you're kind of doing economic development over here on the side, you kind of go, well, where are we going with this, right? Is that, does that fit into our vision? You know, the kind of businesses that we want to attract, the kind of things we want to do, does that fit in with the overall vision and direction we want the town to grow? Right? So it needs to be in sync. It needs to be coordinated. And you need implementation tools. You need a bylaw, a robust, a robust land use bylaw and all these other documents to fit together and implement the MDP. Because if you don't, then you run into all kinds of coordination problems and, and it gets frustrating. You're trying to attract somebody, but you know, you don't, you don't know where the land base is. You don't know what direction you want to go. You don't have a land use bylaw that supports the business that the, you know, the guy wants to bring in. Well, it needs to be all pulled together. And at the end of the day, they call it reducing red tape. I just call it reducing frustration. Then we look at the process. So in terms of, you know, how, how things could go and if, if you wanted to use a, a more robust system. So I used a similar kind of a process down in, in Cypress County a couple of years ago, and it worked really well. They had, they were in the same boat that you guys are in, had an MDP that hadn't been looked at in a long time. Had a land use bylaw that, you know, oh, they said, oh, it's not bad. We can, we, you know, we can just do a few things. Well, you looked at it and it's the same condition as your bylaw was in. So what we did was over the course of about a year, and we had an election in there too. So we, we, we managed to do it within a year. We, we updated all their documents and were able to do that. And what that meant was that, you know, you do a, you do your baseline research, which a lot of it, you know, is preliminarily been already done. You draft the documents. You do public engagement around the draft documents. Then you bring it to council for the bylaw amendments. And then you adopt it, do the public hearings and adopt it. Normally, normally what would happen, just so you know what the, the other process is, you would do the research, then you'd go out and get people's opinions and you'd, you know, do a lot of that. Soul searching and whatever, and then you draft up a document, then you go back and do some more consultation. And then you bring back, do a draft and a more consultation. All I'm saying is that based on what I've seen, I think you can do a shorter version and, and still achieve, still achieve people's opinions and what they wanted, you know, what they're thinking along the way. You know, legislatively, I mean, these are all the things that need to get, be considered as, as part of, as part of the process in terms of the different legislative acts. You also have to factor in what's the provincial interests and, and a bunch of that's changed since your original MDP came through in terms of, you know, what the province's interests are. I don't know why it's split like that, but anyway. So you also run into things like, you know, the hierarchy plans and making sure that, you know, the document fits within where it's supposed to fit in. Making sure that it's in line with your inter-municipal development plan that you have with the county, making sure that it fits in with the provincial regulations and then it gets implemented through the land use bylaw. In terms of the components, like, as I mentioned, like, you had your original MDP and then over time, you've done a number of different master plans. So servicing master plans, transportation master plans, those type of things. And while those documents are not the most current, what I would say is you've gone through, you've gone through a cycle where you've got, you know, a downward economy and then now you're trying to get up and, but not a lot has changed, right? And so from that standpoint, I think your master plans are still not that bad in terms of being able to use that. They're more current than your MDP, than what went into your MDP. And so based on that, I think there's enough of the studies and the strategies and everything else in place that you could take that, put it into your MDP and have an updated MDP. In terms of how you implement, I don't know why that's doing that, but anyway. In terms of how do you implement the MDP? There we go. There. So in terms of how you, how you actually implement an MDP, like most, most councils don't realize that it's, it's a three-part thing. There's, there's the parts that council has to, you, you set the priorities. You set the, the policy direction. And it gets reflected in the MDP. And, and you want to make sure that your MDP stays current that way. It's up to administration to monitor it, to see how it's working or not working. Bring it back and up, and look at it. And, and it really, it needs to be part of your budget process too, right? Because where growth is going to go, where your capital investments are going to go, needs to be reflected, right, in your MDP and needs to be reflected in your capital plan as well. And then you need to look at your land use bylaws to see, yeah, is it current? Is it working? Is it taking us to the direction we want to go? But then there's also the community part. And that, I mean, that's one thing that Drayton Valley does pretty well in terms of getting the word out to, to residents to kind of say, you know, is, are we, are we partnering with different groups to make things happen? And, and Drayton Valley does a good job of, of partnering with organizations and groups to, to implement things. And those are part of the policies that are in the MDP as well in terms of direction. So whether it's housing or whether it's parks and recreation or whatever it is, there's community components to that. And so they all have a role to play, right, when you're updating the document. And in terms of when we look at something like a land use bylaw, right, you're looking at that implementation piece, the regulatory piece. Is it clear, concise? Is there certainty? Because if you're going to have investment in your community, you know, one thing developers look at or one thing prospective businesses are looking at, are the rules clear? Do I know what I can put on that piece of land? Is it going to be a problem? Anytime somebody has to change the bylaw to do what they wanted to do on that property, they kind of look at it and say, well, maybe I can go somewhere else. Maybe there's another town or something I can go to where the rules are more clear and I, and I, I'm certain of what I can do. That's really important when you look at that. And a land use bylaw is something whereby, you know, it really is a balancing act, right? It's about, you know, you don't want to be overly regulated versus having some certainty in, in what you can do on the property. And sometimes, you know, it may seem like those things, oh, can't you do both of those? Well, it's a balancing act, right, between what you can do and what you, what you want to regulate, what you can actually do on your property. So the main components of that, we, we've already, you know, hit off the first one, which is the administrative duties and responsibilities. We've done that part. So it really is taking the bylaw council approved today and making sure that that gets translated into the new bylaw. Same thing with the, with the process part of it as well. But the real key to amending this land use bylaw is going to be, you know, you've got districts that don't have any land attached to it. You've got land that is, you know, direct control but no regulation attached to it. So it, like, the bylaw is, has some serious flaws in it. You've got sections that refer to the other sections that don't exist or whatever in it. So it, it's a bit of a dog's breakfast, right? Same thing with specific use regulations. So, you know, just so you know how a, a bylaw's supposed to work, right? Your, your permitted use category is supposed to be like the long list, right? And you got a discretionary list is, are the, are the things that, you know, they can work in this district, but perhaps they need special regulations that really spell out. You can do it in this district if you do A, B, C, and D, right? That's typically how a bylaw should be working. Your bylaw is like the reverse, right? Got a whole pile of direct, or, you know, discretionary stuff. Very little, you know, things you can actually do without having to run through all these rings. And, and so like, that's the part that functionally it has to be fixed, right?
Which we started today.
We've started on the road today, right? And so this is the part that I'll skip over because we, we've done that today. And so the discussion is, where do we go from here? From, like, I'd like to hear from council, are you, are you up for the shorter version? Or are you wanting to engage? Lots. I'll leave it at that.
Well, I'm not into the short version. I think that there's a process. I'm not into the short version. And, and I think it's because, well, I look at our MDP right now and it's so dated, right? And statutory plans have come a long way than what they were. They're a lot easier to read and you actually can read them and they're in a language that makes sense with a lot of pictures and maps and infographs and things like that. They've evolved definitely where this isn't. So you want it to be easy, I think, when it comes to future land use and where your community is going. And our plan currently doesn't. So I do feel we have a long way to go from this to here. So I don't feel you can get there quick, but I don't look at three to four years either. I think that it needs to have the time so there's the proper sections that are put within the MDP that have not so, I mean, of course you have your policy, but not so heavy in, I guess, language where you could put pictures and infographs and, and maps and things like that that are showing, you know, where, where you're setting yourself up for success in, in the future of the community. So I do see it as a lengthy process because I think that you have to consult those stakeholders to each section that you're putting in there. So a year to me is a good time to do an MDP. Three to four years is not, but I'm of the mind for the year for sure, right? I don't know, I mean, if you could do it in seven months, I, I don't know. We internally don't have the team to house that, so it depends...
This will probably take you, this will probably take you a year to do.
Yeah, I think honestly, and that's what it is, like, that's realistic.
You're the short version?
Yeah, it, it's just realistic. I'm not in favor of the three to four years because like, yeah, I said, of the year, yeah, but not the short like the, I know that council has commented, let's do it in six months, right? It's just not doable. It's not realistic.
Wanting something a little more...
Yeah.
Down to the knee, right?
Yeah. Yeah. That's my two cents. You want to say something? Go ahead. Looks like you're itching there.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll just say this. I've gone through that process, the long version. And I find that, you know, you, you put it out there to the public and every comment will be, take this out, take this out, take this out. They, they'll want to see it just pared down to, we can do whatever we want, whenever we want, kind of thing. And, and not that I'm against eliminating red tape, but I think a, a, a good, easily understandable, straightforward bylaw is what you want to end up with, that's, that, that people can use without a lot of difficulty. But I, I just think if you go that long version, man, it's, I've seen some pretty ugly meetings on land use bylaws. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of taking the year.
That's council.
And it's, well, well, council and, and public too. I mean, you'll get some developers in there that'll push to, to try and eliminate anything they, they can. And they're just trying to, trying to do business, right, as, as cheaply as possible. You understand it, but it holds up the process pretty significantly. And I think, you know, it looks to me like our, our old one is a case of council wanting to, to have control over too big a chunk of, of development. We, we, we don't need to get involved in, 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 in basic developments. Administration can manage, should be able to manage in my mind, you know, 90%, I'm, whatever. The vast majority of them in my mind. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. The one year is, is, is good. And I, and I like the, you know, the illustrations and pictorials and stuff. Again, you, you, you want to try and keep it as simple as possible, but still cover our ass and make sure that we're, it's not so wide open that we're getting ourselves into trouble. That's my, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, what occurs to me is that long or short, we have to, it has to be done. It's amazing to me, I liken it to the, you know, you go to a new dentist and the dentist goes, who worked on your teeth last? What kind of a knothed was that? I'm just saying, well, a very professional dentist worked on my teeth. And so I'm thinking, how did we get here? Is it just over time that we, that we've never really looked at it? Because quite frankly, I, I can't remember ever doing it. And I, but I do remember having and holding public meetings, trying to get public input and getting the five or six people there. And, and they got something to say, just exactly said, we're not, we're not talking 40 or 50. We're talking five or six people. We got 18 staff all going, yeah, that's good, write that down, write that down. And so I'm, I'm of the mind that it's a year to get something done. But I, I really want to think professionally that we don't, I don't go to the next dentist and he wonders where I got my work done.
But my sense of it is, is this. Somewhere along the line, and I'm just, I'm just guessing, somewhere along the line, a draft of a bylaw got put forward. And that bylaw then got adopted without going through the last checks. Because there's sections that are missing, that there are sections that were in the old bylaw that are not in the new bylaw. Uh, and there's, and like I said, there's, there's references to sections that don't, don't line up and. And, you know, when you look at the land use map, there's, there's stuff that doesn't. You know, doesn't line up, right? So I, I see it as you maybe had a draft of a bylaw. Um, but that final draft never got. You, you approved the draft and not the final version, right? Exactly what's going with you?
And we did pushback on the, the changes to the, the land use bylaw. There was the pushback, right, in the questions and everything else and. Hmm? Colin?
So what would the cost be for, uh, you know, a guy with forty-three years experience to? Kind of plow through some.
Well, you already have the budget for it. They're looking for an old guy to do it.
Amila?
Yeah, uh, so. Like I said, we are here and trying to understand, you know, how we need to fix this. Uh, we had a issue with, uh, the development permit that came today as well, right? You know, it's residential area, why it's not residential, why it's discretionary and it has to come to council. So I understand that, you know, we need to fix that. Uh, but when we take the town as, as big picture, most of the developments already happened. Right, you know, we have areas that's empty. But I would say seventy percent of the town is already been built.
Well, the stuff. The stuff I'm going to say in your. Yeah, your developed areas or within, inside the ring road or the, or the highway bypass, right? Everything in there has an area structure plan attached to it, right? Now, how that area structure plan gets related to the actual zoning on the ground. In, in some cases, that's, that's the problem, right?
So you are saying more of, more fixing than?
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's, that's why I'm saying you could probably get away with doing the shorter version is because. A lot of this is fixing stuff, right? And in some cases, over the span of when you had your original MDP as an example to today. Well, you've done a whole bunch of strategic plans, right? So the vision for the community, I have to tell you, it's not going to change, right? Whatever council said was the vision, your vision is part of your strategic plan. That, that's the vision that needs to be in the MDP, right? And so that's why I'm saying at least the, you know, the, the big pieces or the, the, the strokes are there, right? You just need to make sure that a, the document gets updated to match where you've been going, right?
Right, exactly, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at, right? So, uh, that seventy percent of we are just fixing, of course, we are not gonna tell, uh, uh, Mr. Sonner, who has a restaurant there, you can't have a restaurant. So we are just going to align that with what, what we have, right? It's just the, the other thirty percent that we are going to have, um, public consultations and have those things. So I think we can have a little bit of a hybrid approach on, on this.
The real, the real, the real trick or the real reason for the conversation is to say what's council's comfort level with public consultation, right? In, in the process that I'm, you know, kind of suggesting is, I mean, there would be, there would be at least, there'd be at least two opportunities for the public to have. A comment and input into it, right? I mean, a normal process might have like three or four built in with surveys and all kinds of stuff, right? And I'm saying that, that's perfectly valid if you want to change direction. But to be honest with you, your level of growth, right? And direction where you're growing. It's, it's not rocket science, it's not going to be changing, right? I mean, and so if you got your vision, you basically know the town's going to go, keep going in the direction it's going, right? That's where you can probably get away with fewer public consultations because. Nothing's going to come out of that public consultation that's going to. Totally change direction of where you're growing, right?
So that, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, you know, like a hybrid approach, um. As Nancy mentioned, you know, maybe one year, uh, but a honing in the, the ones that's actually not developed, right? And then have more consultation on that side of things. We are fixing and all that. You know, you work, work through that and we all work through that, right? So that's what kind of I think. The idea I'm trying to, I don't know much about. That, but you know, it, it looks like, you know, that, that's a approach that may be beneficial for us.
And, and all of our documents need to align with one another, right? What says one, one needs to make sure that it reflects in the other. And where your land use bylaw is your bylaws, right? And your MDP is your policies, right? Which, which is for future land use and that has things like transportation, utilities, intergovernmental, uh, relations and things like that, right? So the future, so that's your long-term sustainable planning where your LUB is your day-to-day land use, right? So, uh, both of those still remain in effect because you always have to have those in effect. So it's like we won't have a, like, out of, out of service sign up on any of these things. We still use or act in. The plans that we have now, right? And as we adjust them and move forward and change the bylaws and amend the bylaws and things like that. Um, then those will get changed and input it into the land use bylaw to reflect more of our community and our business needs and things that are coming in, right? So like you said, we're running parallel as we're, as we're doing these.
Believe? It was around a hundred and twenty thousand.
And that was for both, the LUB and the?
That was for the MDP.
And that was the MDP?
Just the MDP.
Just the MDP. Five years. Review.
Well, really, I mean, to be honest with you, you should be reviewing it on an annual basis. But then doing a, a significant review every five to seven years, right?
Twenty twelve for the MDP. And it's fairly dated, when you look at it, it's very word heavy and that's the way that our plans used to be, we're word heavy. Where now your plans are, like I said, they have the infographs. It's easier language, people can read. When you, when you look back at some of the documents that are aging. Most people can't read them or don't understand. So how do you follow policy and bylaws when you don't know what the heck they mean, right? So it's easier language, making sure that your residents and people understand the language and what's happening and how things work and just engaging them, right? Making sure that they're kind of going along the process with you. Okay, so you got your answer? Okay, wonderful, thank you very much for that. Um, and then we'll start our list. We're going to go to Hans first, we're going to go to Shelley. Oh, and I'm starting a timer. We only have, oh. Oh. Okay.
So in the first section, you're going to see the total price bid left to be signed this quarter. It's four million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and three point seven seven. Uh, the price has increased now to five million ninety-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-two. And the reason for that is. It was additional work that had to be done, um, with respect to patching, um, where the original underground construction were there. There's also a big difference between the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty, well, not huge, but. You can see it in this price, um, between the rates for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So because we're not doing as much work in twenty twenty-three, that was raised now. Except for reflect somewhat in, in our price. For the twenty twenty-four rates were a bit higher. Um. Also, since ACO wasn't able to give us the data of the depths, it, it wasn't originally budgeted in to do investigation work. So the hyperback holes that we punched along fifty. Works from the original scope, but we had to, was necessary and we're glad we did. Some very, uh, important information in there. Um, and it wasn't the fault of our design very much, but that was. We did have a meeting with ACO, um. We started discussions with ACO in April. So that's like, you know, the depths of your lines, they unfortunately couldn't, both longer than in nineteen fifty-six. Um, but. We believe our conversation started with them in April, that there was potential conflict. Tomorrow's. We have an agreement with ACO that once we find something, it's a year, we have to give them a year to, to move them or relocate. And they'll do it at their cost. ACO right now is claiming that, um, a year clock, then start till July or eighth, the day that we noticed. Once we touched the holes and actually visualized the line and say, yes, it's a conflict. We're saying that's when the time is turned. Um, McLeven, he said, that's not right. So they're, they're going back and forth with, with ACO right now because ACO is trying to say that there could be a conflict on that. And. You know, absolutely not, we started a conversation in April. So I'm hoping we don't have to come back to talk about additional cost with ACO or the price of volume. Information is available. But ultimately, we're only looking at an increase in the construction price of a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine, for what we actually agreed upon. It's not too terrible. There's a little bit of an increase. Um, site days also, I explained that in email. It, it's based on days of construction and, and construction companies tend to bid high on their site days. Um, so that we don't pay, they don't pay, we, they don't pay us, we pay them. Um. To let you know what a construction contract, how much time to be spent on a contract, constructing all of this magnitude. Really shouldn't be included in the. Personally, it was included as per instructions request. We could have got them, if they didn't enter deadline, we could have got them on. No, uh, it's a. Certainly, you weren't. Liberty again. We could have gotten them now, because we had that in the contracting, Sally and Bo. It doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, but we had Bo. Did see email friends that McLeven was requesting not to do site days, but. Construction decided to go with Bo. I'm not going to say we're not going to pull orders to it, but they said. They're, they're probably not going to charge us a site day, but I'll just see what happens, what things progress. Um, so we did have a little bit of an overage on site days as well, additional ten thousand. That's just contingency we want to hold in place in case we had a problem to pay the costs. Um. Next is the consulting piece, consulting fee, I've argued in this size of, is ten percent generally. Roughly ten percent of, of the total project cost. So we want them to, to project manage this fully. The cost for both twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four is five hundred and ninety-six thousand. Um. We haven't agreed to twenty twenty-fourth, um, project management yet, but. That, that, that is what we can expect to see, so. There's a bit of an increase there, um. With the overages on the construction and the overages on the, or the site days. Um. And the engineering, it would stay within the ten percent variance of our total project cost. Um, but there is a section in here in the peripherals. Schedule A two, C two is. C two A and C two B. And that was a lot to do with the sidewalks and landscaping along fifty and five that weren't agreed upon yet. That's the additional two hundred and sixty-six thousand, which would put us over our ten percent contingent variance. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, that's totally clear. Oh, I did.